He's coming back. All right, we're ready. Good morning. It is December 23rd at 9:00 a.m. If you would please rise with me and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning. This is a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, a little bit out of our normal. I'd like to talk about a few amendments to the agenda. I think it's only fair that we add public comments to the agenda, as well as Commissioner comments. And the Commissioner comments, doing our normal role, per JJ every week, would be Commissioner Boyce first, Commissioner Gold second, and myself last. I'm also asking that we move 5D to the other, as we have an executive session to talk about that. And then we have a little bit of a...
Question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Why is... Just in the interest of clarification here, who or why was this categorized as a special meeting? Thus leaving out public comments, number one, and then line of duty desk, Commissioners' reports, Directors' reports. What classifies this, and why do we schedule this as a special meeting? I'm not sure if I understand.
Well, it's classified as a special meeting because the Board this year decided, we were, several months ago, decided we were only going to have meetings every other week, twice a month. This is out of that normal category, so therefore it becomes a special meeting because we didn't vote to start making it three times a month. We still maintain the twice-a-month meetings. So because this is an additional meeting on top of that, it becomes classified as a special meeting. Now, I didn't classify it as a special meeting, so I'm guessing Director of Operations Schmelzer did that, or Counsel did. I don't know who did, but that's the reason, I'm guessing, it was classified as a special meeting. I am pretty certain that the public comments, Commissioner comments, and line of desks were left out accidentally. So I'm giving, you know, I'm giving that forgiveness to them, whoever did that.
So we don't know for sure who or why, but I just saw Counsel Huddle shaking his head no. So I appreciate that clarification. I think we can proceed. I don't know if it's answered fully, but...
Would you like to ask anyone else?
No, I just said I'm okay.
Okay, because I'm, again, I'm not clear as to 100% clear. I'm guessing that's why it's classified as a special meeting. Would that be reasonable, Counsel?
That's fair. I don't know who did it, but I, I think doing what you're doing and adding the public comments, Commissioner comments, and if we're going to do line of duty desk makes, is perfectly allowed, so.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Oh, sorry, John Jesuit, question.
A special meeting template does not have, public comments does not have, Commissioner updates does not have, so it's classified as a special meeting. I use the special meeting template.
Okay.
So what I'm interested to know, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. If it has to do with 5D or either of our executive sessions, that classification of a special meeting. Rehire of an employee, Current Treasurer Crumley, and then the executive sessions, perhaps we could shed a little light on what those executive sessions are for. Beyond just the OR numbers.
We usually don't do that. We usually just list the OR numbers and discuss things in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You pulled 5D. Could you just give us a little more clarification on that?
Well, I'm, we have an executive session to discuss the 1926602A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, and staff member or individual agent. That's what the executive session is for. For the rehire of 5D, that's going to be talked about after the executive session. I'm asking that it be talked about after the executive session. That's all I'm asking.
Is it going to be an executive session agenda item, 5D?
I didn't ask for the executive session on that, Counsel?
I'm not sure either. I don't know that I did, but at the same time, typically, if we are going to consider the hiring of an employee, and our standard operating procedure is to put the hiring after, and then 1926602A is for us to consider in exec session the hiring of an employee or officer. So just put, you know, just drawing inferences, that's a permissible inference that the exec session is to talk about that. But I, my agenda items were the public hearings on the procurements and things like that. And then I think I added an exec session to consider legal advice in case that comes up. So really, those, I don't have any knowledge or input about how the agenda was put together other than that, or what the justifications were. But it's pretty standard protocol. You have the hire order after executive session.
And one of those, one of those executive session items was expected to, to discuss 5D, and 5D should have been put after that on the original agenda.
Well, I submitted it, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I submitted it as a simple action item. So what I'm hearing is the Board wants to address this after executive session.
I'm asking the Board to do that, yes. The Board hasn't made a decision on that, but I'm asking the Board because I, I, I think it needs to be talked about further, yes.
So I'm going to oppose that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. As far as changes, for me, that's all I have. Do you have any changes, Commissioner? Boyce?
Yes, thank you. I want to pull on the consent agenda, the meeting minutes of October 21st. I need to ask Staff Jesuit, who's the driving force behind these minutes that are inflammatory or slanderous, you know? And I just don't want this Board to accept or have a Commissioner subjected to political...
I was following Director of Operations, Ben Rickert's instructions.
So, Mr. Rickert, you...
To put it back on the agenda.
And that was described as some pretty inflammatory language regarding me, correct?
As far as the changes go to it, I, I, I don't know what changes that were wanting to be made to it.
So it's up to this Board to decide how they want to conduct minutes, and we had that discussion last week. I want it pulled, and I appreciate the Board would not follow this path of that kind of language.
Well, I would hope that the minutes described for the rec, for the record reflect directly the comments that are made in these meetings. So if you'd like to pull them from this meeting, to bring them back, so that I could look at, we could all look at exactly what you're talking about. I don't have a problem with that, but I will say that the minute, the minutes need to reflect exactly what was said and done in our meetings.
So then it becomes a tribal type transcript, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
It becomes a transcript, word for word.
I'm not saying word for word. I say the minutes are to reflect the spirit of the conversation. We've asked JJ not to do that. You, you yourself have asked that we don't burden our staff with that. The tapes, the videos speak for themselves. They are supposed to direct the spirit of the conversation, is how I understand it. Am I correct, JJ?
Yes, and the spirit of the conversation being what was written initially, Mr. Barnes expressed disappointment to Mr. Boyce.
And so, Mr. Chair, just a moment ago, you said word for word, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the Board to remove the minutes until you can become familiar, because apparently you're not.
Okay, wait. If this is the comments, I'm sorry, because I wasn't, I didn't look at this particular item in the packet of, if this is the comments of Mr. Barnes that I brought back for correction last week, I thought we did approve that last week, and I did understand that those minutes were corrected.
How so, sir?
From what I saw from the previous record to what was brought up last week, those minutes were corrected to reflect exactly what Mr. Barnes said.
And you're okay with that?
I am okay with that, yes.
And Director Rickert, you're okay with that?
I, I was, I was under the understanding that, that they had been corrected, according to what the Board had discussed last week.
I'm okay with that.
And point of order, are they currently on the consent agenda?
Yes, they are.
We can anticipate a no vote, so for, you know, usually consent is everyone agrees. So I think just pulling them from consent and having a, just a record vote would be an action for the Board then.
Restate that, sir?
Thank you. They're currently under consent, and usually consent is you have one motion to approve the consent calendar and everyone agrees, but it sounds like we have a disagreement. So it's a proper topic for the Board to decide today, just probably not on the consent agenda, is all I'm saying.
If you'd like to pull that from the consent agenda and put it on, how about we put it for 5...
Mr. Chair? Leave it on consent agenda. This, we'll just be wasting more time because I'm not going to get one of the other Board members to agree that it's slanderous. Thank you. Leave it.
Okay. Do you have anything further?
We need to add an action item. I presume we would do, whoops, excuse me, 5I? This is our fifth attempt to, the Cypress RV and Camp part.
The H, sir?
A, B, C, E, F, G. H is amended on the back. You have an old agenda. So it will be, as I said, it will be 5I. Approval of the ODOT, Curry County, Cypress, excuse me, say correctly, it's Cypress RV and Campground for the artwork that they're displaying on the edge of Highway 101. And I think, is it fair to say you're prepared on that? Okay, Counsel Huddle?
If I could speak to that, it's actually two items. We have an IGA and an order with ODOT that makes us responsible, and then we have a subcontract agreement with the RV park that makes them responsible for our responsibilities. And Commissioner Boyce, when you asked about that, I had printed out and put the order and the documents.
Oh, I've got that here.
And these were what we looked at last week, I think, in a workshop, so same, same stuff. It's right there.
Would you like me to hand these out?
There's nothing to hand out. You have them. I just wanted to say if the Board wants to do those, they're available. If the Board wants to, I'm in the agenda to put them on.
Thank you. My apologies. I thought these were moulable copies, so we're, we're good.
Is that all you have, sir?
Is it the intention, just a question, is the intention of this Board to go into executive session and appoint today a new Treasurer, or a Treasurer to fill the position?
I don't know if it's the intent of this Board. I, I think it's going to be talked about, on what we talked about last week. We're, we're going to have an executive session per the order at 11 o'clock, on which there are some conflicts that we still need to discuss with our Sheriff's Office and a public hearing that's scheduled.
Okay.
So, but it is going to be something that is going to be discussed, and I would imagine vigorously.
Okay, and so it's possible we may come out with you being appointed as the Treasurer, or somebody else that perhaps I'm not aware of, and the public is certainly not aware of this path.
I think the public will be made very aware of what's going on.
I have a question. You mentioned a time of 11:00 a.m. Did, did we put a specific time for the executive session?
I, I thought you did last, in last week's order. Wasn't there a time of 11:00 a.m.?
I, no, the, the, I don't, I don't think so, so.
Well, without going back and pulling it up, it's going to have to wait anyway, so.
Okay.
Because we've got two other things, and that's what I was going to discuss with the Board before we move forward, is we have a, we have an 11 o'clock public hearing, and then we also have a special procurement, and that's going to be a call-in from Lieutenant Hensley from the Sheriff's Office. So, I'm sorry, the public hearing's at 10 o'clock.
Yes.
There's two public hearings, one on the fees at 10, and then one on the special procurement at 11.
The special procurement at 11 o'clock. So with the order, we're just going to have to push that back, pass that special procurement hearing. And I just wanted to make sure that the Board was aware of that and understood, so. Commissioner, do you have any changes to the agenda?
I just kind of had one question on 5C. I thought that this was financial position. I thought that was pretty adequately discussed at the last meeting, and looking at putting 10 to 15 minutes again on this issue, I have my doubts.
So is that a motion to remove it, or...
I would like to remove that, yes.
Do you have objections, sir?
Well, yes, I have objections. I'm trying to let the citizens know where we stand financially. Do you know, Commissioner Gold, where we are? And that was a very short presentation that Mr. Rickert had to follow through with, because I'd asked Director Schmelzer to do that, so that those records and her footprint was on exactly where we were, and we don't know where we are right now, so...
Well, maybe I could ask Mr. Rickert, are you ready to go forward with this presentation?
We are ready to, to present some details on, on what I presented last week.
I will say, however, that I thought in your last, in our last meeting, that you said we decided that we were going to wait till the January, the planned January budget meeting. I mean, if you're ready to go, I don't have objection to it, but I'm just saying I thought that was the decision that was made.
I, I had a, I had said that it would be, there'd be more details. It would be more accurate to do at the, at the mid-year budget review.
Okay.
We've asked that, that we put some more detail together, and, and we are ready for it, if you want to proceed.
So do you have a lot of detail today, or, if you do, I say let's go with it, but...
Yeah, we have some detail today to expound on.
Okay.
What was mentioned last week.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold.
All right. Any further changes? Counsel?
Mr. Chair, not sure if it's changes, but just for the record, we've been working on the property transaction, the property exchange with the state of Oregon on the Floris Lake and the Corridor properties. We have those deeds for the Board to sign today, as well, beg your pardon?
I thought they were signed. I signed them, and they were all notarized yesterday or the day before.
Thank you. Good. Those were, that's right, those came in and we passed them around. Good. And then the other deeds we have prepared with the descriptions are from two of the three sheriff property sales. One of them, we're still working with the surveyor, and then there was a forced sale that happened after that sale, and we're waiting for the check to clear, and so have those for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion heard unanimously.
All right, we're going to move on to public comments. Mr. Gordon Clay? Good morning, sir.
For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. As far as I can tell, we've had 195 confirmed cases of COVID, 92 of them since December 7th. 161 in Brookings, 29 in Gold Beach, and one in Port Orford. Yesterday, Oregon's 1,351st COVID death was a 50-year-old man here in Curry County who tested positive December 11th. He's our third death. I'm wondering how he caught it. Did he attend a pre-Thanksgiving party at the Alx Club, where guests were guests wearing masks and practicing social distancing? Or did he have a good friend that attended? Or did he get it from somebody else who had gone somewhere down the line, who was spreading their droplets there? How many people has contact tracing determined out of the 92 people since December 7th were in, were a result of that unconscious party? And yet, as the actions of a few, that party and others like it could keep Curry County in extreme risk and have kicked our kids out of school, at least for the end of the year. This holiday season, you may, may be a perfect time to think about and make a decision of what you want. A burial, a cremation, what kind of casket, a wake, a cemetery plot, or ashes scattered. All things that would burden your family to try to figure out. Be sure to FaceTime your friends who are really important to you, even if they, you live together. Because if you or they get COVID, once you get to the hospital, that might be the last time you see or hear and talk to each other. Otherwise, have happy holidays, wear your mask, and practice social distancing. There's a lot of COVID droplets floating around out there, and potentially in here. On a lighter note, I want to talk a little bit about suicide and the, the year two of the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council for Curry County. It was a difficult year with the pandemic, but I'm proud of the work our members stepped up and did, and especially getting the informational brochure on suicide prevention at the end, that ended up in every business and household in Curry County, and on the countertops of over 100 retail locations. Chair Pash, could I request the presence of Commissioner Boyce beside me?
Sure.
And practice...
I would be honored, sir.
Practice six-foot social distancing. Yeah, great, thank you. I want to sincerely appreciate the work you've done with and for the Council, and your encouragement to continue when the pandemic made it difficult for many of our members to attend meetings. You shepherded us through, assisted reducing the Council in size, and got things prepared so that the Commissioners could appoint three new members today, giving us the full Council for the first time ever. Therefore, I want to present this six-feet, six, six feet.
Six feet?
Yeah.
Double arms length?
Yeah.
Two outstretched arms.
I'm very...
I know you've got long arms.
Well, no, I'm very, I'm at, at risk. Therefore, I have a certificate of appreciation awarded to Court Voice as a founding member of the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council of Curry County, and don't forget to sign it there. And thank you so much.
Go ahead. Gordon, I'll never forget, we went upriver with, I don't know, 45, 50 vets, and we had just a little bit of extra time after dinner on that trip. And you had everyone in that boat, because I handed you the PA system, and you talked to all those vets, and I know that made an incredible difference. So we skipped this year, we're going to do it next year, and you have to go on both trips so that you can talk to them during the meal, and just remind them, because they were not just being polite, they were intensely interested in every word you had to say. We almost got back at dark, but we made it back safe. Thank you, sir.
Right, and those vets, you know, they are really, many of them are really in trouble right now. So we've got to pay attention and keep them in our circle of communication.
Citizens, I had absolutely no idea. He should get all the credit, 100%. Thank you, Gordon.
Nancy Sue Rose? Good morning.
My name is Nancy Sue Rose. I live in Naseka Beach. First of all, I want to thank you again for the letter to the Governor about the lockdowns and, and its effect on us citizens. Has that been put on the county website? I tried to find it and I could not.
We are working on putting it on the county website. I think we, it is now, okay.
It is now.
Okay, and it's easy to find?
Yeah.
That's debatable.
Okay, I'll call you if I can't find it. Okay, thanks. And sec, oh, and in relation to that, unfortunately, the continuing shutting down and opening back and forth of restaurants and businesses is causing suicides all over the country. Number two, I wanted to just say to the Commissioners that, that Court Voice is wasting time in the meetings. He starts off many meetings saying, "Let's not waste time on these meetings," and yet he is the one who is not abiding by the Chair and the county councils, county council, when they say that, that you are getting off topic. And bringing up issues from executive sessions is not appreciated, and also repeating yourself over and over. I would say to maybe watch a meeting sometime and watch yourself. Thank you very much.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Ms. Rose, item 5H is something I think you might be interested in. It's the, from the state of Chamber Commerce, Oregon, and also Douglas County. Plain terms, reopening our businesses, and then also Economic Coordinator Madison will have a little bit of a report today with another county. Actually, two counties we're working with along those lines, so I think you might be interested in that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
David Barnes?
Morning, sir. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. I was hoping that Mr. Huddle might clarify something for me. What is the difference between an elected official and a public officer? An official and an officer are two different titles. You are going into executive session today to discuss a, an elected official, and I would like to, right now, voice my objection to that. The people of this county have a right to know what happened with this, with this person, and why they may or may not take office, outside of any medical reasoning that they might give. Many of us heard an interview that he gave with KCIW yesterday, where he said he will let you know on January 4th. Quite frankly, that, to me, that's not an acceptable answer. There's bills that need to be paid on January the 5th, and we need a Treasurer trained and in place at that time. I, I, I just want to say I voiced my objection to you deciding, to talking about this in executive session, and I believe that the public has a right to know that what is happening with this, and for you to do so otherwise, you know, I mean, a lot of stuff happened in executive session in the last year that I believe was improper, but I don't know what was said, so I can't make that allegation. I just believe it. As it is right now, you know, this really needs to come out and be said in the public, so that we all hear what's happening with this, not just the three or four of you, and then rely on a report.
Again, I'm not even sure that I noticed the executive session. It's been talked about for this one. What I've heard, it's to consider the employment of a former county official or county employee. So if you're saying it's to discuss the elected Treasurer-elect, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
If, if we do that, we've added additional justification under, I would be giving attorney-client legal advice on legal options, which is information exempt from disclosure. Now, that being said, those reasons are for the Board of Commissioners, and so the Board of Commissioners has, has the choice. And I'm not, again, I think I put, so in other words, if a lawyer gives their client advice, the client can waive the attorney-client privilege, but not the lawyer.
I understand that. I just believe that until that point happens, that the discussion should be, if, if you get to the point where you're going to give advice, that's one thing, but until then, the discussion should be held in public, so that the public can hear what is going on.
Okay. Mr. Boyce?
Thank you again. Item 5D is real straightforward, as I said earlier. I'm going to read a short paragraph here. Current Treasurer, Debbie Crumley, elected Treasurer, will expire January 3rd. This is a rehire order for her, for her up to maybe five, six weeks, probably only three or four weeks. The county bases are fully covered by adopting and taking action on this hire order. She's willing, she's gracious, she's incredibly well-trained, she's been in this job a long time. Why would we postpone that?
Well, again, we are going to, after executive session under other, we have moved this to the other. So we will be discussing it in, in depth of what our current Treasurer situation is, and what is hopefully coming.
And like a lot of things have been done here, behind... behind the scenes, instead of out before the public. I don't understand.
And I, and I concur with that. The meetings that you've had with him in Brookings and Assessor Cullen-
Oh, stop your assumptions, please, sir. Stop your assumptions. I've not met him in Brookings. Where'd you get this stuff?
From him.
More lies.
From him. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ann Powers? Good morning.
My name is Anna Powers, I'm from Brookings, Oregon. I'm here to talk about just empowering the business owners and the citizens to remember that they have a First Amendment right and what that's supposed to protect. I'm a business owner. I have the ability to work with my family, to provide for my family. And if lockdowns are enforced and imposed, that puts us as citizens and business owners in a position where we're forced to rely on government assistance, which I don't see that as a viable option. I don't like that that is the general consensus in our state. And I do feel like in Curry County, it's a little bit different. People have shown that they have rights and they can think for themselves and protect themselves. So I'm voting or asking that you guys would put on the agenda something that makes it known that this is a right we all have. It's not going to be infringed upon in Curry County and to support local businesses. So, the dine-to-stay program that I've seen on there, that's great. But how are people gonna know who's open, who's closed? There's mass confusion on whether it's to go, whether you can dine in, whether you have to stay out. Should people call first? How about we just stay home? Everybody just goes to Fred Meyer? I mean, it's not about numbers. And the number of cases, that's, I mean, we've seen false reports and false positives and all kinds of things all over the place. So I don't rely on that. I'm gonna protect my family and I'm gonna provide for my family, along with my husband. And I would just would like the opportunity to do so and for it to be made known that we are backed by our county.
Well, I want you to know that through conversations that I personally had with our governor, I voiced displeasure in her lumping us into rural counties, into the population of Portland, Eugene, these places. So I think rural counties need to be looked at differently. I believe there's going to be a presentation here later today about doing some of that, pushing towards some of that. And I, I am in full agreement with you. I think that we need to make sure and let the governor know that rural counties are not to be treated the same as places like Portland. That we, we can do this, our numbers prove it. And our, our businesses have suffered enough.
Commissioner Boyce? May I take liberty of offering you that this is what we're discussing? I'd encourage you to stay around if you can. But if you can't, that's where we're going. And I hope the Board will approve that. Two different programs there, we're gonna be working very hard on that address the issues you very eloquently described there. Thank you. Elizabeth Nickaton?
Nickaton.
Nickaton, sorry for murdering that. Mine's one of those names that gets murdered all the time, too, so.
Really short, so I have to adjust. As you know, I am a Brookings resident and I ran for Curry County Treasurer in the most recent election. I am absolutely appalled with the situation that Commissioner Boyce, County Council John Huddle, Assessor Jim Cullen, and Clerk Renee Cullen have put Mr. Hanscom in the voters' end. I learned in June that Commissioner Boyce had pressured Treasurer-elect Hanscom to file for office at the last minute. This is public record. Apparently, in secret meetings, Boyce and the Cullens guaranteed Hanscom he could do the job part-time. After training with Treasurer Crumley, Hanscom confirmed that the position required more of a commitment than he was told. And he did not think he could do the job or had the skill set to do it. He also allegedly stated that he was going to take the oath and then resign, as you all have heard. In a panic, Boyce and the Cullens apparently assured Hanscom they would hire a deputy treasurer to do the work for him while still providing him the title and salary. Suddenly, as Hanscom's intents were made public, a letter was sent to Mr. Boyce referencing a medical emergency. While I do hope Mr. Hanscom's family is okay, it does make you wonder if he is covering his behavior and deflecting away from the root of conspiracy. Commissioner Boyce has a known history of attempts in doing his friends' favor by pressing staff to hire them. When Boyce finds he cannot control an employee, he resorts to taking them down with the help of the Cullens and Huddle. Just watch as Boyce brings his friends on staff despite lacking qualifications to do the job as modeled by Mr. Hanscom. I feel that Mr. Hanscom is a victim and has been taken advantage of by Boyce and the Cullens in an effort to further their own agenda. He has been a pawn. One has to wonder what Boyce has promised Huddle as a result of Huddle conspiring behind the backs of Gold and Pash. To enable Boyce's own agenda, Boyce will conspire with Herzog to keep Huddle on staff as long as he remains the yes-man. Let's hope Commissioner-elect Herzog's integrity proves otherwise. All the while, Boyce and David Brock Smith scheme to create a vacancy for Shell Megson to fill the position of treasurer. More favors for more friends. Making my case further, is it coincidence that both previous camp hosts of Boyce-Coke County Park are now living at Cypress RV Park illegally? The park owned by David Allen, Boyce's friend? Boyce fought his own county employees in the need for David Allen to be permitted to build his RV park and in fact, threatened intimidated the employees if they continued. Isn't this the same RV park you just mentioned? That Boyce is pushing the county to support in contract with ODOT for the highway frontage art displays? You have to ask which one of those ex-hosts has been promised management of Boyce-Coke Park once Boyce manages to eliminate the park's manager? He has been harassing since Jim Cullen informed Boyce it was the park's manager-wife running against Renee Cullen for county clerk. Jim Cullen should be focusing on the efficiencies of his own department. With as many staff as he has budgeted from the general fund, his lack of integrity for the position shows in the revenue shortages we have in the county tax base. Renee Cullen does not take her role of service to the taxpayer seriously. She pawns her work off into Shelley Denny, Denny, sorry, who really runs the department. Mrs. Cullen is either absent or making sure she is on the phone with personal calls. This has been witnessed by employees and citizens. Why are these concerns falling on deaf ears? Both departments are heavily staffed, a drain on the general fund, and lack the commitment of a department head in setting the example of work ethic. I want to know how Commissioner Boyce can continue to justify the financial drain of lazy electeds? Is that really the best use of our tax dollars? So why did Boyce work so hard to get Hanscom to run? My guess is that the good old boys of Brookings and Curry County shared with him that I am a bookkeeper that functions with efficiency and honesty. Honesty that some employers don't necessarily want to own. Sweeping issues and misprocesses under their carpet is what will hinder a budget and grow dysfunction. Transparency is critical to the financial well-being of a company. And when an employee is encouraged to compromise the integrity of their work, therein lies corruption. I am not a politician, I'm not a good old boy. I am a knowledgeable, experienced, and qualified bookkeeper that has made the honest commitment to serve the taxpayers of Curry County full-time if elected, and I didn't win. Even when that means I am called by my ethics to come before you and make a stand against the corruption that we voters continue to witness take place in county government. The reason why Boyce worked so hard to get someone, anyone, to run against me? It's because I'm honest. He didn't want someone honest to do the job. It is a known fact that Boyce wants to take the road fund money and use it for his own agenda. It is critical that we protect the road fund, financial investments, and economic credibility of Curry County for our taxpayers. I would also like to bring to the Board's attention a public statement made by our state rep, David Brock Smith. In answer to a comment I made about this Hanscom situation, he stated, quote, "I for one will be vocal against you ever being appointed to the position of treasurer," end quote. I want to ask the Board, all three of you, why our state rep thinks he has any say in what you as a Board does? Commissioner Gold and Commissioner Pash, I want to say thank you for fighting against corruption, standing ethically for the county, and not giving up when the work gets dirty. And finally, I want to say, please remember, you are the Curry County Board of Commissioners, not the Curry County Board of Court Boyce.
Oh, I have packages for each of you, I'm sorry.
Nice to meet you, Ms. Nescott. Truly.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, for the record, I have not made any deals with Commissioner Boyce.
One more? So, Mr. Chair-
I'm sorry, I gave one too many. One too many. Give me one better, thank you.
There is borderline 20 slanderous comments there that are absolutely false. Absolutely false, ma'am. I don't know where you get your assumptions.
Public record, I have been watching the Board of Commissioners meeting. Public record.
I, I have no further comments. That's tragic.
Well, I want to say at this point, I have never met you. I have never spoken to you. I did communicate with you on one very short email. You asked me only if you could have a little bit more latitude, an extra minute or two, because your comment may go over. As I have done to a few other people over the past two years, I, I told you I would allow that. And that's the only time I've ever spoken with you ever about anything. Um, so I just want everyone here to know that this is not something that was nefariously planned, that I'm going to speak with her. I will say to validate some of her comments, I spoke with Mr. Hanscom last night. And he did admit to me that he is being pressured in many directions. And one of the names he affirmed to me was Jim Cullen. And he said he's had conversations with you. And he's had conversations with council. And now, council admitted that he had a conversation in his office. So he may have been lumping that conversation in. But I will say, last night, he told me he was feeling extremely pressured, being pulled in all directions, and that's very close to a quote, being pulled in all directions. And when I asked him specific name, a specific name, he verified Jim. And he said he's had conversation with you as well. And he is very unsure about what's going on right now. And he would stick by his radio interview that he will make his decision on January 4th and not before, willing, and I asked him, you realize you're going to leave the county without a qualified treasurer for weeks or possibly months because of the training procedure that it's going to take? And he said, that's, that's, he understood that? And it's unfortunate. That's all I have on it.
So is this, may I ask, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is public comment gonna continue here so we have a debate?
No, the public comment's over.
Okay.
Thank you.
So did you call Mr. Hanscom, or did he call you?
I was asked by David Brock Smith to call him.
Okay, and did, was that conversation private and in a confidential way? If he took the time to be with you?
Uh, no, I called him as a commissioner. I said, "Hi, this is Commissioner Pash." I called him on a county phone.
So you would think that he would be okay with you stating, as you interpreted, the conversation between you and I? To go before the entire public?
I didn't interpret anything, sir. I'm stating, as I just said, almost a quote, what he said to me. It was, I may have missed a word or two.
Yeah, that's all it takes.
But it was almost a direct quote. And I will stand by that with my hand on the Bible.
And we're tearing, this is tearing this county-
No, you're gonna make that comment, we're tearing. Sir, the tearing might be, you need to maybe look in the mirror. If you'd like to go into that, I can go into that now because I have the list. These are the list of employees that you keep saying that everyone is tearing. You've had problems with Tom Huxley, Clark Schroeder, Sue Gold, me, Dave Fortman, Jeremy Dumeier, Josh Hopkins, Anthony DeRock, Chet Brewer, Julie Schmelzer. People have moved out of the offices in the Bock office. You told the treasurer last week she wasn't even qualified to be a treasurer. You tell Mrs. Ward you'll give her the benefit of the doubt on her job performance when the lady's working 90 hours a week? And now you're in our Director of Operations' face? Telling him he can't move into an office that was vacated by our old Director of Operations? Sir, I think maybe, you know, like I've said many times, my mom used to tell me, if you broke up with your girlfriend this month, I feel really bad for you, son. But if you broke up with three girls in one month, you need to look in the mirror, sir, at how you talk to people and how you treat people.
So, Mr. Chair, when it's all said and done, I would put my honor and integrity and ethics up against you any day of the week.
You asked me to, you asked me to provide emails, sir. I have the emails in front of me that you asked me to provide. One says, I'll just read it right out loud, "Court Boyce to Christopher Pash, Julie Schmelzer, and Cherie Ward, on March 12th of 2020, eight months ago. I want a discussion with the three of you regarding outside travel of an employee in this county before this weekend." That sounds like a direct order for you to have a meeting with me, Cherie Ward, and Julie Schmelzer. I want a discussion with the three of you. That's an illegal meeting. You're asking me to do that.
Now, have you got an email since then? And were we in, were we in an absolute national emergency with no-
All I'm saying, sir, is you, you said to me you've never sent me illegal meetings, emails. I'm providing, I told you I would provide what I have. You asked me for pictures of the, of the truck. I have all those, I have other emails and complaints. You asked me for those at the last meeting. I have all of those for you if you want them. I'm just responding to what you asked for. I have it here for you, that's all.
Did we have that discussion? And did I request that we examine county travel in and out of this county?
All I'm saying, sir, is you were demanding in an email, a private email to me, which was going to be an illegal meeting. You're asking me, you're demanding that I have an illegal meeting.
No, I'm not, that's, that's nine months ago. And we were in the middle of a national pandemic with tremendous-
The email speaks for itself. "Good day, I want a discussion with the three of you regarding employee travel outside this county before the weekend." Period.
Did we have that meeting? Should we have had that meeting, sir?
No, we didn't have the meeting.
Should we have had that meeting with people going back and forth?
No, it's illegal. It's illegal, sir.
And it could have been here before the whole Board? Was that not the intent?
Let's move on.
Yeah, let's move on. Have I sent you any emails since then, sir? You didn't even know what blind copies were?
No, I don't know what blind copies are.
You still don't know what blind copies are?
It's a copy, all I know is-
You accuse me of that.
Let's move on.
It's false.
So let's move on with presentations. Commissioner Boyce, Curry County turns 165.
Maybe we'll have a light moment here. I briefly touched on this last meeting. You see the date right here, 1856. So this was pre-Civil War. And this is in the days when the county seat was actually in Port Orford. Give me one second here. It doesn't mention Langlis, but this is an article, as best I can tell, was 1935. I think it might be interesting to the citizens. Before we go to the, the rest of the presentation, I'll keep this as short as I can, Mr. Chair. "Port Orford, population 300. Took its name because of its proximity to Cape Blanco with Captain George Vancouver called Cape Orford in honor of his friend Earl of Port Orford." Uh, that needs a little clarification here. "This rambling village, on a bluff, has a wide view of the Pacific. Near the village is Battle Rock, where nine men were landed in June." Uh, I'm gonna read word for word here. "In June of 1851, with supplies, arms, and ammunition by Captain William Tishner of the Seagull, the men battled with Indians shortly after landing and again, two weeks later, vastly outnumbered. They fled to the mouth of the Amquah River, where they were welcomed by whites living in the area. The following month, Captain Tishner returned with a much larger party, which established a camp at Port Orford. According to Tishner, two block houses were created inside the heavy logs and everything done for a permanent settlement. After Curry County was created in 1865, the territorial legislature placed the county seat temporarily at Port Orford. The first county courthouse was in the home of local resident Frederick Smith. Port Orford was the home of Minnie Myrtle Dyer, poet of the 1860s and 70s. When she married Joaquin Miller, who had admired her printed works and started a correspondence that led to Miller's visit here. After three days, they were married and started off on horseback to Eugene. The marriage lasted only eight years. And Mrs. Miller took revenge by lecturing caustically on her former husband. The name Port Orford is associated with a sizable meteorite supposedly discovered in 1856 by Dr. John Evans, some 30 to 35 miles from the southwest Oregon coast. Although Evans provided general directions to the site, no one has ever found it in the years since. South of Port Orford, the mountains press close to the sea and the highway curves along a shelf high above the waves, Humbug Mountain State Park." I think this is, again, 1935. Includes Humbug Mountain. The massive promontory was formerly called Sugarloaf Mountain, then Tishner's Humbug. According to Captain Tishner, the latter name came from members of an expletory party who disregarded his directions. Were ascending the south side of the mountain, they became lost, said Tishner, and assigned the new name to palliate their gross failure. Greenwald Brush Canyon, I'll skip that. The side of Frankport, used to be a lot of activity there. Former village with a shipping dock on Sisters Rocks, just offshore, reached from the mainland by a bridge and wooden railway. The name of Euca Creek, Ofer, likely derived from a band of Tututni Indians called Yucachetanee. Yucachetanee. Band's name meant people of the mouth of the river. In this case, both the mouth of Euca Creek and the Rogue. South of Creek are Sandy Hills Bright, in season with yellow and Verbena and vivid Lapine. Right here to Geeseville Monument, I remember that growing up as a kid. There's still folks buried there. If you have never been there, it's, it's worth a visit. Three sons were slain by Indians in 1856 during the Rogue River Indian Wars. The mother and two daughters were captured but later released. Wedderburn, population 100 on the north bank of the Rogue River is a vacation resort with a small Myrtlewood factory and small hotel. For years, it had, it had a salmon cannery, but it was shut down because of the closing of the Rogue to commercial fishermen. The Rogue is famous for steel-headed salmon fishing. Small boats are able to ascend the river about thirty-two miles. The route crosses the Rogue River on the long arched concrete, Isaac L. Patterson Bridge, named for the former Oregon governor. You know, sometimes they say we're rural, isolated, now frontier. And then this refers to primitive. Gold Beach, at that time, the population was 500, I think. Seat of the most primitive county in Oregon. Gold Beach has only begun to shed its pioneer appearance. The town takes its name from the mining on Curry County beaches beginning in the early 1850s. Small operations for gold and platinum are still carried on upstream in mining. Sometimes muddies occur in to such an extent that its brown waters are seen far offshore. Right here to Cape Sebastian, which juts into the ocean to form one of the striking landmarks of the southern coast. Rising 700 feet sheer above the water, roads and trails lead to viewpoints commanding splendid views of the Pacific. In 1603, on exploring expedition, Sebastian Vizcano, V-I-Z-C-A-I-N-O, spotted a white bluff near what he thought was a forty-second parallel and named it Cape Sebastian, San Sebastian, in honor of the saint of that day. Concluding here, somehow they slip past Pistol River. From this site, Cape Ferrello, not accessible from the highway, named for the Bartolemy Ferrello, who, I didn't say that correctly, Bartolemy Ferrello, may have sailed as far north as the Oregon coast in 1543. That might be a little bit of a guess. Did we skip Carpenterville? No, making sweep, we're almost done. Making sweeping curves, sometimes along ledges of gold-bearing quartz and through heavy timber, the route passes a huge kitchen midden and descends to Pistol River. The name commemorates James Mace's loss of a firearm in the stream in 1853. According to an 1854 report from Indian agent J.L. Parrish, the river also bore the name of Chell, Chatel Ascension Indians, who had a village near its mouth, Chetco. In March 1856, during the Rogue River wars, a company volunteer troops was caught off guard and placed on the defensive by Indians at Pistol River. The volunteers held out with a loss of one man until their eventual rescue by regular troops. Carpenterville, population 35. If you ever get with some of the old timers around South Pistol River, around the Cape Ferrello, they'll tell you about the Callgrove Brothers. I grew up, they were a legend in Curry County in those days. Just a couple of fascinating Old West guys. Carpenterville and the highest point on the highway Mount Shasta is seen on clear days. Ghost Forest, where fires have blackened the trees, marked the approach to, finally, to Harris Beach State Park. North interest to Brookings, population 250. And then it talks about Crescent City. One real quick. This one is, I think, the first recorded minutes of the Curry County Board of Commissioners. And then I have just one more. I want to offer this, I think, got a little bit of humor. Might have went just a little bit too far. Well, here we go. No, not it. I'll read it to you from this, this program here. Anyway, real quickly. Motion was resolved by the board that whereas Ripley Dodge of Sixes River had posted notices of his intention to apply to this board for a, I can't tell the word, it's not science, but to sell spiritual liquors at the Sixes River store, but by reason of his absence from the county, was unable to do so at the pursuit session, present session of this board. And then it goes on to say he did come back later and he paid his fee and he was able to sell out liquor at the Sixes River area. So that's all I have on that, Mr. Chair.
All right, with that, we're going to take a brief five-minute recess. We have public hearings coming up at 10 o'clock. So we're going to take a brief recess, come back into public hearings.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities. And the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Hi there, I'm Patrick Priest, Executive Director at CIS. And I really enjoy coming every year to this conference because CIS, we are all about counties. We are owned by counties. We were formed by the AOC. This is a great occasion for us to meet everybody in one place and learn what's important to the counties all across Oregon.
It's the networking. I mean, we learn a lot about the different issues that counties deal with, but it's networking with other commissioners, getting ideas on how they handle situations that is the most helpful for me.
I love my job. It actually matters to me on a daily basis. I used to do a lot of charity. And, you know, in commissioning, in DeShut County, you can make a serious difference. Lots of things have happened since I've been in office and I feel like it's important to represent the people. I grew up in eastern Oregon and I love the residents of eastern Oregon. The architect of our first house actually had Doris Day as a dear friend and a client. And he would bring Doris Day up the mountains in Malibu to our house as it was being built.
This is my fourth conference at AOC. My favorite part is the fellowship with other commissioners and coming up with solutions with common situations and with commissioners from around the state to best serve our people. My favorite part about being a commissioner in Josephine County is the people that we work with. We live in the most beautiful place, but we have the most beautiful people. They are talented, artistic, caring. We have such a high level of philanthropy and just caring for our fellow citizens. And it's the best place in all of Oregon.
Hi, I'm Commissioner Martha Schrader from Clackamas County, Oregon. I'm the current president of the Association of Oregon Counties. Oh my goodness, I've been president for one year, but I've been a member of the Association of Oregon Counties since 2003. So one of the reasons I really wanted to be president and I've enjoyed it so much is because I get to know everybody across the state, all the commissioners. And I've been from one end to the state to the other, visiting with them, talking with them, and really getting an idea of how we differ, but more importantly, what our similarities are and what we can do with one another to move forward with good county government.
I've been coming to AOC now for four years. My favorite part of serving as commissioner is trying to bring positive effects for our community in our county.
This is my second year at AOC. And the camaraderie that I've found in my eastern Oregon partners and just the camaraderie of AOC has really blessed my life.
My name is Court Boyce, Curry County Commissioner. This is, this is a collection of people, county commissioners, public officials, well-attended from all over the state. You know, I have the privilege of working with...
All right, we are back in session. It is 10:02 on December 23rd, 2020. At this time, we are going to go to 6A. This is a public hearing, resolution for setting county fees, 2021. I open this hearing, Council Huddle.
Thank you. In the package are the proposed fees. We published them. We've proposed a newspaper notice of the hearing on the fees. Thank you.
We did newspaper notice on the hearing on the fees. And then we have published the fees on the website. Since the, I think I hit that. Since the publishing, we had some feedback from one department. Economic Development thought that the economic development fees shouldn't be under, it says, the list says, BOC and economic development. And there was a question whether they should be lumped together. We can certainly just take BOC off of there. But the only thing I saw is that Miranda Plaggy's job description has her still as a backup to the BOC administrative assistant. She handles a lot of those things. I don't think it matters. And then there was a amended fee schedule for the road department. So that's been corrected. So you should have a revised fee schedule. So what you've got is a master fee schedule. And then you've got the proposed fee schedule on the, the biggest one would be the septic tank approval. So with that, I'll just wait to respond to any public comments you have at the hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to open public comments at this time. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, public comments are now closed?
Just request a motion to adopt the fee scheduling.
Discussion?
A motion in a second, then we discuss, sir. Or if you want to discuss first, go ahead.
Thank you. In trying to adjust potentially environmental health fees to the restaurants and all related, how would that affect us if we adopt this today?
Once you adopt a fee?
Wait six months?
Yep, six months. And so, anyway.
So if we, if we postpone, Council Huddle, our table for even a month, is that going to put us too far behind? Or would we be not fully, fully with our responsibilities timeline?
That's the will of the board. The rules just say that once you adopt a fee, you cannot raise it again in six months. So that would, that would just, that's just a timing issue. So it's up to the board.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, sir.
So that was my presentation last month. And if there's any way we could take a serious look at all the restaurants, and there's well over 100, not just eateries, cafes, et cetera, but just for one year, maybe two, dropping those fees by 50%. So based on that, you know, we had basically recommended a workshop so we could see if this is doable, practical. You know, so much depends on what kind of relief they might get or might not get. Anything we can show at the county level that we are supporting them and concerned. And yeah, it'd be a little dent in our revenue, but who cares? I mean, they need tremendous support. So based on that, I'm going to make a motion when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Well, I see...
Could I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Essentially, the order should say that the board is allowed to waive the fees. I've, I submitted two orders and we've only got one in here, so I'll have to go double check. I think the green waste fee was doubled up.
You can, you can't raise fees for six months, but you can, you can suspend and/or remove fees.
Right. So, so I think the option, if Commissioner Boyce is talking about granting some people from some, you know, reduction of fees or waiving of fees, I think that's still possible even if you adopt the fees today.
Commissioner Gold?
I was just going to say that our department that inspects restaurants and so forth right now is self-sufficient. If we just drop these fees, there's problems. And not only that, some of the individuals that have asked for these fees to be dropped in the past have not paid their fees and have sent in checks that bounce. So I think that needs to be considered.
I see Ms. Madison here. Could I get a comment from you, please, on where are we with? Do you know where we are? Or that's actually Miranda's thing on where we are with fees. But we had, we had the rollout for, for the money that this, you know, we, that you worked, you and Commissioner Boyce worked to distribute to a lot of the businesses in Curry County. So with that, were a lot of those restaurants that Commissioner Boyce is talking about, I don't want to say made whole, but did they receive some of that money to help them, you know, help them on their bottom lines?
Yeah, I mean, it was distributed to over, you know, 50 businesses, but over 150% of the applicants were not funded. And it's a drop in the mere bucket, especially with what's coming down from Congress right now with PPP opportunity. They're really not seeing the grand scope. Payroll protection isn't necessary when you don't have employees that are actually looking for other jobs, trying to support their own families. So, you know, we can continue to find Band-Aids, but they eventually peel off. And we need to get to the root of the issue. And I'm hoping to address that later, I believe, with Five Age, Commissioner Boyce?
Yes. All right, thank you.
So...
Commissioner Gold?
It's okay, I was going to make a motion, but if he wants to discuss further, that's fine.
No, I just, I'm satisfied with, with what Council Huddle identified there, that if we need to reduce the fees or have that opportunity or as the board decides that we should do, then we can address it at that time. And I'm sure at this point, I will very likely bring that up, so.
All right, Commissioner Gold?
I make a motion that we approve the fees.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rooker, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just have, I just have a question, really. If we reduce fees, waive fees, whatever, who picks, who ends up picking up the bill on that? And the county ends up covering it? Does it, so does it essentially fall to the public to, to pick up the tab on those reduced fees? Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Commissioner Gold?
I just wanted to make a motion to approve the fees as presented.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, so with that, this hearing is now closed. We are now going to open a public hearing for the resolution increasing Curry transfer and recycling green waste dump fees with Luke Pike.
Mr. Pike is with CTR. He indicated he could not make it. But these are the, he did confirm that these are the fee requests that he is having. And it says in there that they basically are a transfer station. The location that they transfer green waste to is raising their rates. And so therefore, CTR needs to correspondingly raise its rates for those. This is not a pickup rate that goes around to all the people This is not a pickup rate that goes around to all the people who get the pickup services. This is for people who come to the transportation and dump. So it's, it's pretty limited. They'll have a pickup fee later on in the year.
Okay, so with that, this hearing is now open. And I'd like to also, at this time, open public comments. If there's anyone like to make a public comment? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. Commissioner Gold?
I just wanted to mention that I had quite a lengthy discussion with Mr. Pike. And they are not raising the rates on people's regular trash, but they had to do this with the green, as Council Huddle mentioned, because their fees went up. And just like any business, if you have extra expenses in order for you to make it, you have to unfortunately up the fees, so.
Anything further? Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the CTR fees as presented.
Second, Chair Pash.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
With that, the public hearing is closed. We're going to move back to our regular agenda. Presentations, biochar presentation, Commissioner Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an eight-minute video. I'm going to just condense it down to four minutes. This is something we're really excited about. It's into the future. I've already ordered two of these, by the way. They're only about $100,000 apiece. This is a small one that can incinerate. Gorse seeds would be at the top of the line for both North Curry County, South Curry County, and of course, South Coos County. But incinerators seed, so they cannot reproduce. So anyway, I'll go to four minutes and then finish off. Uh-oh, how about volume? Can we do something about the volume here?
I think it's the remote control might control the volume.
Well, you can turn it down right there as well. There's a little thing on the, go up some, right, nope, down. Right there. If you click down on that, there you go. Now it's good. Turn the video back on and it'll be fine. That's what those bars mean, huh?
Thanks, sir.
This is abandoned duds, by the way.
So when we build a golf course here, we basically clear the entirety of the surface, leave select patches. And basically, in the past, we just burned it, buried it, disposed of in any way. But this could potentially do for our resort is take a nauseous weed, turn it into a usable material that we can then use on the golf courses that are divot mix or to kind of increase our fertility.
That's charcoal, by the way, that's a very good soil additive. Again, it's cleansed of any seed just by the sheer level of heat.
We increase our CEC based on what we find in this biochar. So it's exciting to us at the resort, knowing that we can take something that's been basically a nuisance to the town abandoned and the surrounding area and actually finally use, use it for something that, that potentially has a positive use for us. The firebox is simply just an air pollution control device. So it's designed to just control the smoke and control what you're burning inside of the firebox.
The smoke that's exhausted from this is also essentially free of toxins because also of the sheer heat.
Start the fire inside of the firebox, just like you would with a normal campfire. So you'll get a torch or some sort of flame and you'll ignite some good burnable material inside the firebox. What it does, you've got the air curtain. The air comes out of the curtain and it's powered through a diesel engine or electric motor. And then diesel engine or electric motor, they power the fan and the fans give all the air through the manifold, the air curtain on one side. Now then, that air curtain is going to blow up from one side to the other, bouncing off the opposite wall. And then what will bounce off the opposite wall is going to go down towards the center of the firebox in a certain motion, what we call the secondary burn chamber. So inside of the secondary burn chamber, what happens is the smoke is put down in that secondary burn chamber, once it hits the air curtain. And it burns off, so just heat waves come out of it.
No idea what happened there.
And then with the United States Forest Service and Airburners Incorporated through a FARA agreement, so a FARA agreement being Cooperative Research Agreement of Alvin Act. Or for the char bogs. So the char bogs is what we, the name, between the two of us. So being a joint venture that are a machine that not only can work as an air pollution control device like it has for the past 23, 4 years.
Right here, it looks like this guy's going to get knocked out, so hold your breath.
We have an air pollution control device that not only is going to solve the problem of gaining rid of unwanted foot waste, which are also able to create fire char at the same time. Which is, I'm currently finding on today, it has a value to large municipalities, to cities, and to the average end user that's going to reapply it in the land. We need many different sizes of fireboxes. This is one of our smaller sizes. So being the short bogs or bird bogs, this one will do around one ton an hour. And then the larger fireboxes will do up to around 13 tons now.
Okay, we're going to just go fast forward now a little bit. By the way, board, thanks for... This guy's with the Forest Service and he teamed up with his char burner company. Forest Service has taken a long look at this to see if it can be really practical and efficient, as efficient as a company is trying to display here. Somebody that wanted to be in this business, especially as dense as our fuel loads are, it might be a good business for somebody someday. Or businesses.
You paused it. Oh, no, you didn't, never mind.
These are the hardest working government employees you ever see. That's pretty much it, guys. I've got one more. Third time's a charm here. Let's see. This is just a little bit about the company. The Forest Service, as I said, is blending or teaming up with them. And I'd be interested to see how this goes. When I say possibly for the future, could be 10 years, could be two years. These are very expensive, so I'm just joking about it. I didn't really order a couple of them. The other thing I want to show you here is where we sit in the scheme. Maybe I can go a little bigger here. These are the heaviest areas. And you see where we are in Curry County, right north of the California-Oregon border. So the Forest Service, again, is looking long-term. They've spent a lot of time in this. And boy, anything that gets rid of pampas grass and Himalaya blackberries, gorse, and others, would be something that we might see in our lifetime, hopefully. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold?
I just wanted to point out, I did a little research in this area and a study was done by a wide variety of people, including BLM, Checkco, South Coast Watershed, Community Wildfire Planning Team, Coos Curry Electric, Kokeel Indian Tribe, Timberlands, Curry County Board of Commissioners, Curry Transfer and Recycle, For Pacifica, Hambro, Mensha Forest Products, Oregon Department of Agriculture, Oregon Department of Energy, Oregon Department of Forestry, Oregon Invasive Species Council, Oregon State University, OSU Extension, Rogue River, Siskiyou National Forest, South Coast Lumber Company, Southwest Oregon, RC&amp;D. So you can see, and I read those simply because there was a wide variety of entities involved in this study. And bottom line, what they came up with, initially, they wanted to have a char, a char, a biochar entity here in Curry County. They found out that it was not feasible simply because there was not enough fuel available. I don't know whether this is different, but I would recommend that you look at this study very carefully before you proceed with any monies going out from the county.
Forgive me. I didn't even remotely suggest, I was joking about that, Ms. Gold. And this is very preliminary, yes. South Coast Lumber, to hear you say that, you know, we don't have enough fuel or words to that effect, forgive me if I misunderstood. But we have so much fuel here. South Coast Lumber did look at it through Gary Milliman, oh, four, five years ago. And that was a study done at Washington State University. And it just wasn't profitable enough. However, at that time, there wasn't the aspect of the biochar that was developed as a byproduct that could be very good for agriculture. So it's very early, you know.
Well, if things have changed...
I'm not promoting, spending any money, for God's sakes. I've been waiting three weeks to offer this to the board and the public. And I don't have any stamp of approval on it. I just thought it was a fun presentation. And I'll be interested to review your study. Thank you.
It wasn't my study. It was done by a wide variety of people, so, just saying.
All right, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. 4A, 4H Extension District Financial Review Agreement. B, Revised Minutes Business Meeting, October 21st, 2020. And C, Adoption of a Position Description for an Existing Position, Deputy Treasurer. Have a motion?
I move that we, I thought we polled one of those? No, I guess not. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next is 5A, Appoints Members for Suicide Awareness Prevention Council. Commissioner Boyce.
I'm finding, here we go. We have three members to appoint that, oh, this is taking some time in getting from the 17 members down to nine. We're pretty optimistic that this is going to be a very productive group. So, Mr. Chair, you see the order here. Actually, it's an ordinance number 1912. The three people that have agreed to serve, Tara Madugno, Mental Health and Medical Position. Term expires December of 2024. Curry County Sheriff's Deputy Jordan White is appointed to council in a public safety position. His term also expires December 31st, 2024. And Emma Nicole Gorski is appointed to the council as a youth ambassador position. And her term expires in June. I would guess that's probably when she gets out of high school. But that is a guess. So this is a very good group, add to some very dedicated people here. And we're really, as you heard Mr. Clay say earlier today, we're trying very hard to get back on track. And our numbers are down in suicide, but we're, we're holding our breath at that. With all that the county and the youth and the schools everyone is dealing with, that number is probably not going to hold. So we'll do everything we can to impact that number as low as possible. So I would like to have a motion on this to approve as an action item.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
5B, Dying to State Program, Phase 1B, Miranda Plagie, Economic Development Assistant. Where is that Miranda, Ms. Plagie? She might be busy doing something that if somebody could see where she is. And I would appreciate that. And we'll move on to 5C, Request an Update for the Curry Financial Position. Mr. Rickert? Commissioner Boyce?
I want to read this real quick. Just so the public knows that overall, just as one commissioner, I'm pretty happy with the direction. Miranda, do you want to go back?
Go ahead.
Stay with this. At the December 2nd, BAC General Meeting, I had asked our 2020 Finance Director Smelzer for an update at the December 16th meeting. Was trying to give her a couple of weeks there because I know what the whole finance department is up against. She didn't get that report, so maybe we had a misunderstanding, but Mr. Rickert did. Commissioner Gold referenced that earlier today. There was not a lot of detail, in my opinion, but it was adequate for what I, I was glad to get the information, and I think the public was too. But he gave that brief updated financial report. Then I asked for additional detail, but also understood that to give them as much time as possible, but there's an urgency here. And then I want to correct, under brief background, it says a more detailed End of 2021 Financial Report. That's supposed to be 2020. So sorry about that, Boys. I understand it's been a very difficult year in county finance with management transitions, new accounting systems, and two, Curry dealing with many variables, especially related to COVID-19. Those uncertainties have had a tremendous impact on our expenses and revenues alike. I'm concerned to best know our present county financial position as best that they can offer. And that's no small request, I realize, but I think it's very doable and I think they're on target. And even though they're anticipating some delayed transactions, so I want the citizens to know that we, that I believe that the county and staff are consistently doing better all the time. And just really happy to see that. And with all that they're dealing with, they have a lot of complicated uncertainties. While at the same time, doing their best to follow through with every part of our strategic plan. And I think they are. So that's all I have for now, Mr. Chair. Anxious to hear their report.
Mr. Rickert?
Okay, so as I was mentioning, I gave some summary last week. Sina Crook, the Assistant Finance Director, has put together a little bit more detail. And she's here to present that.
Good morning, Ms. Crook.
Does that work?
Yes.
I'm Sina Crook with the Finance Department. And as, as Brad had mentioned, we'll have a whole lot better finalized information with the mid-year review with the Budget Committee in January. But I am able to put together some, some points as to what's been going on this year. And we've been, you know, way behind on things with the lack of Finance Director for way over a year. And so we've struggled along and have done what we could as we could do it. But at the end of fiscal year 1920, which ended June 30th, all but one of the 27 departments in the general fund needed to take less from the general fund than what they had budgeted. So that's awesome. So that left more money in the general fund to start this year. So also in 2020, CCH returned Public Health to the county, which created a cost that was not budgeted. But we do have an agreement with OHA, the Oregon Health Authority, that issues monthly grant dollars to the county for the required programs that we have to provide for the citizens. And we also get reimbursement for the additional public health COVID costs. And to provide all this, the county hired a public health administrator and a staff of three, working full-time. But now COVID commands most of their time. So it stresses everything really thin. And on the COVID front, COVID has created many obstacles for our workforce and costs to our budgets. But our leadership has been timely in submitting the claims for reimbursement through the CARES Act. And each department has developed a schedule for appointments and contacts as needed so they can continue to serve the public from home when required by the governor. Fiscal year 1920, COVID cost reimbursements were at $263,388. And that was for the March to June period. And our leadership has continued to submit the reimbursements. I think it's about every month and a half. and a half, and we've been reimbursed quite a bit, upward of $800,000. And we've been notified that, in addition to the hazard pay that the Sheriff's Department has received, we've been notified that we will be reimbursed for the balance of the sheriff's payroll from March through November. So, that's huge.
Would you mind, Sina, I hate to interrupt, would you mind repeating that, please, for the public?
I said, in addition to the sheriff's hazardous pay that COVID dollars reimburse, we've been notified that we will be reimbursed for the balance of the sheriff's payroll from March through November.
Six months.
And just listening to the news, it sounds like they're going to continue those care funds, as long as the emergencies have been extended. And then in other revenues, the new transient lodging tax was voted in by the citizens, and that brought in $518,757 in the fiscal year 2019, 2020. $553,578 to date have come in, and that's seventy percent above what was budgeted for this year's revenue. And then the Building Department and Planning revenue was up last year, and on track to do the same this year. And the county has added additional inspectors, and we have an agreement with the City of Brookings to stay on top of our building inspections. The Assessors Department, which, you know, we need to get our appraisals done timely in order to get our tax revenues, which is the bulk of the General Fund dollars. So, the Assessors Office has hired an additional appraiser, and they've updated their system to help get property appraisals done timely. And the property tax collections are up twenty-eight percent. Our economic development was instrumental in recently acquiring $700,000 for COVID-affected businesses here in Curry County. And then our Parks Department is historically self-sufficient prior to COVID. COVID has taken a big hit on it, and in the last couple of years, they have implemented a new online reservation system, which has helped tremendously. And then in our Finance Department, we are happy to have Brad, our new Finance Director. We've been without a Finance Director since July 2019, which has hindered getting financials and auditing done timely. We are scrambling to get caught up, and we finally got through with one audit, and ready to start on the next. And we'll have our financials current by the end of December. We've been working on implementing OpenGov, the new accounting program, since last January, and it's scheduled to go live in January for the accounts payable.
Bravo. You guys have done tremendous work, and I want to say, as your liaison, watching some of the stuff that you guys have accomplished and how you've worked through it, on top of having the audits, having, you know, a change in your office again, getting used to that, and going through the OpenGov process, I just, bravo. You guys are great.
Thank you. It really has been boggling.
It's wonderful to see how well you're operating now, and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done, and I report to the board that's five stars. So, Commissioner Boyce?
I see you smiling behind that mask. So, that is.
You have to.
That is terrific. So, yeah, we've had five directors since, what, late 2016? So...
I think we found one that's going to stay this time.
Got my fingers crossed. So, that is very good news, and certainly good news, I think it's going to be a couple hundred thousand with the Sheriff's Department payroll for that six or seven months.
Nine months.
And that is, yeah, that is just gigantic. You referenced the next round, the president may not sign that. So, he's got a new approach, last minute here, he's calling the House and Senate back into session through Christmas Eve and Christmas Eve. So, I don't know where that's going to go, but I am reasonably optimistic. Thanks a million, Ms. Crook.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Okay. Terrific. Next, we're going to go back to 5B, Dying to Stay Program, Ms. Plagie.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Miranda Plagie, Curry County's Economic Development Assistant. No, that's okay. Thank you. Today, Curry County's Economic Development Department and partners stand in place of restaurant owners, and we're ready to discuss and finalize the Dying to Stay Program. First off, I do want to say thank you to our partners. The City of Brookings is a partner and is continuing to actually provide administrative services in kind for the program. Curry County residents and volunteers who work behind the scenes, in the background, to make sure all the businesses are in the program and have created all the material to actually educate the owners and the public. We'd also like to extend our thank you to Travel Southern Oregon Coast, who is funding our marketing on a regional scale. We're also excited to find out that they'll be investing in our Phase 2, which will include lodging and is also a larger investment on their part. Commissioners, it would be presumptive to expect the cities, at this point, to have funding available, when their budgets weren't prepared for any of these closures, nor was ours. Our approach has been to lead by example, to find the solutions and act on them as all, for all residents and small business owners. Much like the state, the state sees all regions as an important asset for a robust tourism industry. We also see the cities in the same manner. They're all essential for Curry County's robust tourism industry. So much so, that when collecting data for spending and earnings and employment, accommodations and food are often on the same data line entry point for travel Oregon. For instance, the travel impacts for 2019, which is provided by Dean Runyon Associates, the earnings for accommodations and food are together. It is eighty-one percent, or forty-seven million dollars. The employment, again, together, accommodations and food. Those are generated sixty-eight point nine percent of our travel industry, which accounts for about 2,199 jobs. Only in spending are those separated in different line entries. So, for instance, spending by commodity, food services, thirty point four percent, which is forty-two million dollars. Accommodations is actually at twenty-one point eight percent, which is thirty million dollars. So, as you see, lodging is important, but the majority of the spending is being done in our restaurants.
Good point. Good point.
Today, we are urging you, the board, to move forward and approve the Dying to Stay funding.
Commissioner Gold?
Questions? I just have one question. I know you said the cities can't afford to put into this program, although they will benefit. Is this within your budget to do so?
So, we are, we are hoping to secure COVID reimbursement first. If that is unavailable, we would be asking to use the TLT funding to move this program forward. We do see it as a viable funding opportunity, because tourism, as I stated just a moment ago, the funding itself is hand-in-hand with lodging. So, the lodging, whether they're staying in, the unincorporated, they are eating in our restaurants, whether it's Gold Beach, Port Orford, or Brookings.
Question?
Counsel?
So, you mentioned the TLT funding, and, you know, it's been a while since we adopted that, or since the voters approved it, but I believe there was something going to be like a program recommendation committee has, and that would, what would be the process of having the TLT pay this? In other words, would this be submitted to that committee to approve as part of the plan of TLT? And that's going to come back to the board, I think, early in next year, but I'm just wondering how it comes to the board, or if this is going to be approved by, or considered by that committee and such.
So, in a normal situation, it would actually be, it would be a recommendation by that board, that committee. They would then come to the Board of Commissioners and ask, for instance, if this was something that was viable. So, that's how the spending and sort of the reimbursements to whatever programs that they end up seeking that for.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I thought it was mentioned last week that the City of Brookings had, did, or did contribute to this.
They did, actually. So, they are funding their city restaurants, but they are providing in-kind services for the administrative part, which is, for instance, when a gift card is purchased for a specific restaurant, the City of Brookings will batch those and then actually send that restaurant the check for that. So, they're actually getting reimbursed fully for that.
Okay, but as far as the $15,000 goes in here, they're not contributing anything to that?
That, that is actually for the unincorporated, the City of Gold Beach and Port Orford.
Okay. And as the mayor of Gold Beach was here last week, she was asked to revisit her budget to see if, see if they could help out.
We have not heard back.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said you hadn't heard back, haven't heard back?
Yeah, we hadn't heard back, no. No, sir.
Well, I'll make a motion, if you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
To approve action item, the $15,000 for the Dying to Stay Curry County contribution coming out of the TLT funds, is that correct?
No.
No?
No. It would be first COVID relief funds.
Excuse me, you said that. Thank you. Okay. Motion, so, I'm in, Mr. Chair.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thanks, Ms. Plagie. Very good.
Thank you, Commissioners.
D has been moved to other. E, Adopting HIPAA Health Insurance, Portability and Accountability Act, Counsel Huddle.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and this was presented at a workshop, I think, a week or two ago. And again, and you also heard, I think, in Sina Crook's presentation, that we are taking back public health, and so HIPAA is part of that. HIPAA, again, as a reminder, is for the information and treatment of patients. HIPAA is not really a relation between employer and employee, but it, there are probably other elements that deal with that, but it's essentially protecting information, and it's about processes. So, we've established the policy, and then I'll just give a presentation on the next two orders. There's a Privacy Officer and a Security Officer. The Security Officer is typically responsible for the EPHI, which most everything is, which is electronic protected health information, and we're recommending that the IT Department, whether it's contracted or in-house, at some time in the future, be the Security Officer, and then that County Counsel, whether it's me or somebody else, be the Privacy Officer, who's responsible for making the rules and then enforcing the policies within ourselves. So, really, unless there's questions about the policy, just requesting a motion to approve this, and then the other two items after that.
So, you want to make these as three separate motions?
They are three orders and three motions, yes, Mr. Chair, so, thank you. I just wanted to do a combined report.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Boyce?
I'll make a motion, but I just wanted to commend Counsel Huddle tremendous work on all three of these. Goodness. And it makes me feel like we're catching up where we need to be with the rest of the world, and this is just good information, so if you're ready for a motion?
One moment, sir.
Okay.
I just want the public to know that I've kind of looked into this as well. I've spoken with several people about this exact thing, and I've actually even spoken with Ms. Ward about this, and she concurs with Counsel Huddle that this is more of legal issues and reporting processes than it has to do specifically. And the people that I've spoken to all concurred that this is something that should probably be done through County Counsel's office on this, so just want that knowledge out there to the public. So, if we have, did you have anything?
No.
Do you have a motion, then?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve this order, Health Insurance, Portability and Accountability Act for Curry County.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
F, Appointing HIPAA Privacy Officer, County Counsel. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve appointing County Counsel as the HIPAA Privacy Officer.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
You know, I think that motion needs to be amended, because Counsel Huddle said it was IT as the privacy.
Nope. IT as a security officer. They.
Okay, so we're good.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll say aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
And from what I understand from G, it'll be Counsel Huddle for now until IT is on board with us, correct?
No, I've talked to Dan Springer, and he said they would, you know, they would do it. And essentially, if they didn't, then oddly, someone else would have to be between them and our, it's all about managing our electronic information systems.
Absolutely.
And they're already doing it, so.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint the HIPAA Security Office as County Counsel.
Sorry, the IT.
The IT, sorry. I got them confused.
I actually think in the agenda packet, I've been going back and forth, there, I think they also might be, again, special meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
5H, Commissioner Boyce to support the Douglas. I don't have that in front of me here. Go ahead. Kind of borrow your copy over there. Thank you, Mr. Rickert. I was giving Economic Coordinator Madison a bad time saying, it's been a long time since I heard that the State of Oregon has a Chamber of Commerce. So, Douglas County, no surprise, once again, has done their homework, and I think the title, Mr. Chair, speaks for itself. Encourage local leaders to join the Board of Commissioners, Douglas County, in supporting the Oregon State Chamber of Commerce Business Reopening Plan. So, I'll just read a couple paragraphs here. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners would like to encourage city, county, and state officials, as well as local chambers, councils, and business leaders to join us in supporting the business reopening plan recently submitted to Oregon, Oregon's governor and state lawmakers by the Oregon State Chamber of Commerce. The clear and concise plan details the basis for this timely and profound recommendation that aims to help our businesses hardest-hit by COVID-19, to help them pull through this economic recession and overcome their financial hardships. Quote here from Douglas County Commissioner Tom Kress, great guy. As fellow citizens and business owners, we share in the frustration that our local businesses, families, and residents are dealing with. The last nine months have been challenging to say the least, and now, more than ever before, relief and a future for their livelihoods. Please consider joining us in supporting the plan presented by OSCC, commended Commissioner Tom Kress. This just came out a couple of days ago, or I would have had it to the board. I appreciate the board allowing me to submit this kind of late, which was in time for a 24-hour notice. I don't think we need an order or a resolution or proclamation on this. I think what we need, Board, is just a consensus that we could send them a note, an email, a letter of support for the tremendous work they've done here. And then I have one also that I could speak just a little bit about, I don't know if Economic Coordinator Madison's here, she can chime in on that. So, can we do one at a time? I'm assuming that the board is in favor. I know you just had it. I know you just had it read this morning, but I did get it in 24 hours ago. Is this in conjunction with the Yamamell, Yamell, or is this, that's the second one you're talking about? Completely separate, but somewhat similar. We're going to have a workshop on the Yamhill County. I know the commissioner's there, and they have done some incredible work. Mary Sterrett, I've worked with off and on now for four years, she has got no less than a hun, in primarily through McMinnville, but Yamhill County has got 150 letters of support for the courage and the direction that they're showing. What we're planning to do is have a workshop on this, 2:00 on January 4th. That's a little bit of a, more of a delay than I would prefer, but it's really to give us adequate time, the board, to research this and become as familiar with it as possible. I think this is a good way to go. And we'll also be working with them, you know, throughout the next 10 days or so to learn all we can and make sure we really do want to present it to the board for hopeful approval. But it is business-related, and it is a little bit of a liability protection. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Madison, it is a little bit of a liability protection for the businesses that have been burdened by the, by the requirements of them, the money they spent, the investment to try and, you know, everything down from losing inventory to developing different seating, the 25% option of what they can do fighting to keep their employees going. And so this is in no way to defy the governor, her orders, executive orders or otherwise, is to help the people that are working through this, to give them a little bit of protection. So yeah, it needs some additional research. Ms. Madison, do you want to offer anything to that? And we're, we're not asking for a vote on this today or a consensus.
No, and thank you, Summer Madison, Curry County Economic Development. The Curry County Board of Commissioners knows what's best for Curry County, not the state. And so when it comes to supporting and protecting our small businesses, that's our responsibility. Sidlinger is very well-versed in what is required of masks and social distancing and washing our hands, and we respect that. We want to continue to respect that. But we also have a call to duty for our small businesses that are our economic backbone, and when you think about the implications that this is having, especially this time of year, and nine months ago, when we were asked to close for 14 days so that we could eradicate this pandemic, that was not the case. And here we are, several closures later, and I'll tell you that yesterday, when Miranda and I made door-to-door visitations to restaurants, most of them were not open, and it was a Tuesday, and we don't typically see businesses like that closed on Tuesdays. Signs said anything from, hey, give us a call if you want some food, but our doors are locked, to we are shut down until who knows when. It's devastating because the hospitality is our number-one driver for industry here, and those people aren't working right now, and that means that payroll protection isn't going to support these folks. They are, these business owners can't pay their rent, so the, the leases aren't being paid for the mortgages. They're not investing in Christmas gifts or gas money to go see their family, they're worried about paying the electric bills, and that money's not being turned back in to our economy. And so I feel it's imperative that we honor and respect what the state is coming down with in regards to protection of our citizens from the COVID-19 pandemic. With the same regard, we need to protect our economic vitality and the impact socially, economically, emotionally, we haven't even, we've barely scratched the surface of that. And I, I would implore you to engage us in a workshop on the 4th with the intention of getting something similar to a small-bis business sanctuary passed on the 6th unanimously, if not the 20th of January, because our small businesses, they need to know that that's, they are a priority for us. And I, I welcome especially those that are reluctant or hesitant to support something like this, because those are the needs and the concerns that need to be addressed first.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Barnes?
David Barnes, I, I want to speak in support of this, but I also want to speak to the urgency of this. There was hundreds of people who gathered up in Salem the other day to protest at the beginning of the special session, to reopen Oregon again. They were met with an overwhelming show of force by the state police, and some of them got beaten and shot by rubber bullets. This is an important issue to the state of Oregon, you know? Our governor has shut down our economy, and people are suffering. The letter, I, I support the letter that Commissioner Boyce has brought in this morning, but I, I, I must ask that you provide a stronger response than what he suggested. Rather than an email or a letter saying, yeah, we like it, I would, I would suggest a resolution of your own supporting this to be sent off to the governor. You know, I, I really hope that when you come back after the first of the year, that this, that the, that the small-business sanctuary ordinance that was discussed is one of, is the first thing on the agenda that you discuss. Our businesses are dying here, you know? I look at all of our restaurants, and like Summer just said, I saw a notice the other day from Pacific Sushi, we'll open when we can do sit-down again. There's no point in us, we can't live on takeout. You know, we have hundreds of people who are out of work because of this, and, you know, I just, I, I support what's being done, but I, I must urge you to, to act on this as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I personally think that we're not doing enough, and I think that, I would like to see all of the commissioners from every county in this state go to Salem and stand on the front steps and let the governor know how serious this is. Rural counties should not be treated the way that Portland is treated and Salem is treated, and I agree with Commissioner Boyce on this, and I also say that I would like to see it much more entailed and much more, let the governor know how offensive this is to our county. Business owners that have put their life's blood, their life's earnings, and their family's future on the line to own a business, and she just slid the rug right off from underneath them and took that all away. So I, I would completely support this in an even stronger terms. Commissioner Boyce? You know, the, I, I had a visit yesterday from one of the local restaurant owners in February before all this hit. Had 38 employees, he's down to...
He's actually outside.
He's outside, so I don't know who this is. Likely the governor. Good be asked. Hello? Anyway, that's while we're waiting. That same business owner's down to 14 employees now, and he just had one of his chefs move to Medford. If you've ever been in the restaurant business, that's the hardest position a qualified, a qualified chef is, just almost invaluable. And so even when he can't open up, he's looking at, he's already shut down one restaurant, so we're watching him very close and hopeful for some recovery there. What we could do, Mr. Chair, and part of the two, the spelled out very well in the Yamhill order, real quick paragraph here, whereas to date, an estimated 1,003 Oregonians have died, I think that's up to 1,300 now. Am I wrong on that? I think it's right at 1,300. Anyway, COVID-19 approximately, 1.25% of those who tested positive, and approximately 0.022% of Oregon's total population. Point is, there's no scientific data or evidence to point, and it's such a minor spread in restaurants, if it can even be measured, and that's the saving grace we have here. We're very disappointed the governor has not taken that science and data into account for what these people are dealing with. So what I would ask the board, after if you want further discussion, is to just rec staff to, to write an official order to support this and get it to them as soon as possible. I think we can get that done before closing tomorrow, even though tomorrow's Christmas Eve, I understand. So if we have an agreement on that, Mr. Chair? I'm in agreement.
I'm fine.
And I'll be glad to work with anyone. I don't know what Ms. Madison's schedule is, but, you know, she could put her input would be helpful. So maybe we'll have something to sign tomorrow morning or even this afternoon. Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to forego aye for now. We have Lieutenant Hensley here from the Sheriff's Department on a procurement of a body scanner. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for making time for me today.
Anytime, LT, anytime.
We got organized here. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, Lieutenant Joel Hensley, Curry County Sheriff's Office, I'm the current jail commander. One thing that's been always a problem, and especially with COVID now, a lot of people don't understand in normal jail operations, part of our, when somebody gets lodged, we have to do a full-body inspection, and that means where the person's completely unclothed. Right now, with the importance of masks and masking, we are requiring people not to have any kind of facial thing on, to literally open their mouth, stick out their tongue, raise their tongue, pull their cheeks apart, and pull their lips down, which exposes our deputies to possible exposure from COVID, because people that come into our custody haven't been tested, and we don't know the history on them. Also, as part of this full-body inspection is the infamous squat and cough, where a deputy literally has to get down and look at, towards a person's rectum while the person spreads and coughs, which also produces air droplets from the person coughing, which we're making them do. Also, we have discovered that every time a DUI gets arrested in the central county area, they end up coming to our jail for where our toxilizer is. Our deputies are having to put hands on by doing a full pat-down on every one of those people, which puts the deputy really, really close to the person's face, again exposing them to potential exposure. So as part of the CARES Act, they have money set aside to, to pay for things that help limit the risk. We have a great opportunity here to obtain a body scanner, which is usually something that is way, way out of the price range of Curry County. I believe the total quote I have here is just at $180,000. But with this device, we can run people through it at a very low radiation level to look what's on their person without having to, I can expose their mouth to us, without having to expose their rectum to us. We can modify policy to where we can run people through the scanner to discover these items. When I started looking into this, it was, it was a little ways ago, however, I have discovered there's only one unit that would even fit in our building and even fit in our workspace. It does appear to be a very high-quality unit. I do know of another jail that has it, and I'm close friends with that sheriff, and he is very supportive of that device, that's Clatsop County. I believe Jefferson and Creek County are also getting the same device. I did make up little information packets. Um, this particular device? Think you already have one?
Yes, I've seen that. I think I've seen it too. Thanks, Lieutenant. Yeah, I've seen this.
So this, this certain device that is called the Tech 84, it's the Intercept brand or the Intercept model. On this, the, the things that I did find that were very, a lot that was better than the other units, the other units use like a conveyor belt that the person stands on and brings them through at about a seven seconds' worth of a scan. So they actually have to stand on a conveyor belt and be moved across, and then they have to step out of the machine. This one here, the subject does not move, they stand in it, it only takes four seconds. It uses a different technology. All the other scanners stay at the bottom or at the top and scan and cut pieces of the pie either way. This one here scans straight ahead. So in theory, it has less traveling radiation through parts of the body, it's more of just a straight-on. It's a very, very small footprint. I did bring this. The other devices, I required a tape measure and two deputies to measure how big the device will be, and we simply do not have the room. But this right here is the entire unit. This would be the footprint. So I, I...
Watch your head coming up.
Upside the table.
Yep.
So we plan on putting this in our basement, down by the elevator, for those officers that have done the tour. When you first come into Sallyport, the long hallway right there then by the laundry room, we're going to put that right against the door. It operates on 110. It is fully movable, so if another building is in our future, we can move this item.
Right.
It is not permanently designed to be in this exact spot, so if it turns out we can't have it there, we can move it around. The other units I've found, once they're installed, that's where they are yet, have the technicians come out to move it. There's some pictures in there, there's one of a, one of an actual scan, and what you'll see on it is the person's dental work, a chain around their neck, their wedding ring, and then some metal inserts on their shoes. And then some people thought, oh, that's a syringe, and then inside the person. It's not, it's a zipper off his pants. There's training that goes along with this so that we can identify these items. The jail uniform that everybody's used to seeing does not contain any metal in it. The shoes do not contain any metal. So whenever we have a person going through a scanner and they're wearing the jail uniform, we should be able to detect any foreign item inside them. I think that's about it for the presentation of the machine itself. I did bring a comparison of another unit. The other footprint of the other unit is 94 inches tall, so it's 100 inches tall, but it needs 110 inches to be able to stand upright with the sewer pipes and those ceiling we have in the jail. I don't think that would be possible. This unit here can be broke down to 54 inches, and then the top half put on top. The other unit is 77, 77 inches wide, which is, you know, pretty big, and then it's 101 inches long. So yeah, it's, and so, again, you guys familiar with our area there? We couldn't bring a pallet through, we couldn't bring anything through our Sallyport, and this machine here actually sits up off the ground higher than any of the other detection units to make it less permeable to water, if we have a water line break. Hopefully, the machine will not be damaged. Part of the quote I did obtain due to the expense of this item is an extended bumper-to-bumper warranty of the four years. I think that's a pretty good price for as expensive as the unit is. I think it's cheaper than a car extended warranty for something comparable. I'm trying to think of what other information, I, I tend to over-informate, so there's, yes,
I just have one question.
Did you check into the other counties?
Were they able to obtain these units through COVID, or did they have?
The CARES money, that is my understanding.
Okay, good.
Well, for me, it's always safety, not only for the officers, for your department, but, you know, for the prisoners as well. It's fair to be safe for everyone, so.
Absolutely.
This is something that I have huge support for. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, just, you know, the, I think it's the Fourth Amendment, unreasonable search and seizure, you know, you hear the, the female part of the population say, you know, it shows too much. I think that was covered in the information you sent out a month ago.
Yes, there is policy, so.
You're prepared for those kind of questions, complaints?
Yes, absolutely. So what we would, what we would do is by policy, we would convert, like right now, all the, unless there is some edgeryn circumstance, which I can't even think of one right now, males will search males, females will search females. That's what this, our policy would reflect on this. Only males would do scanning of males, females would do scanning of females, and the other sex would not be allowed to look at those photos, those images, unless it's a safety security concern, or like we're writing a search warrant or something to that effect.
Now that you brought that up, I have another question.
Okay.
Are these images stored anywhere, or once the inmate walks away, they're, they're gone?
No, they have to be tracked to make sure you don't over, you can't put somebody in it every day for an extended period of time. So this unit here actually takes a person's photo, it downloads from our jail management system, all their information, and it'll document how many times that person has been scanned, and then it'll have the results of the scan saved.
Okay, so going on to Commissioner Boyce's question, if, if Commissioner Gold were to do, or a female were to do a, a scan of a, of a female inmate? What would she do then? Would she log that into a file with a password so not anyone could get in there to look at those photos, you know what I mean?
Right now, we contain, we have sensitive photos at all our disposal right now, and it's, it's not our, our policy to be able to look at just, we, I, I can't just go look at a sexual assault victim's photos. We have access to them, but we can't do that, and so it would be a violation.
So you keep that in the same protocols?
Oh, absolutely. And now how it actually... Oh, absolutely. And now, how it actually works, when the nuts and bolts of how this works, I have, I don't know. I'll be totally honest. But that's where we would have policy to protect us, that, yeah, you cannot be looking at those images, we can't be talking about people's stuff, it's still protected information.
Perfect. All right.
I move that we approve this purchase.
Did we open the public hearing? We had, this is a public hearing, because.
Oh, is it?
I didn't, it doesn't say a public hearing on there, so.
It's on the agenda at 11:00, but also, by the way, just for the record, yes, this is a public hearing. This is what the jail commander lieutenant has been talking about, our justifications for purchasing this. We made a statewide advertisement and a publication in general circulation to let everyone know. What we did not do was do what's called a request for proposals. We didn't do a formal bid. We're doing an exemption from competitive bid, special procurement, and then we've made the findings. So the order is for the board to adopt the findings and approve the contract.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing on this. It is officially open, it is 11:11 a.m. Do I have any public comment? Mr. David Barnes? No? Okay. All right, we're seeing no public comment. Public comments are now closed. Anything further on the public hearing? It is now closed. We have a motion.
I move that we approve the purchase of the, is it a scanner?
It's called a, yeah, Body Scanner.
Body Scanner, okay.
Intercept, Tech 84.
Second, Mr. Chair. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Gladly, yes. Thank you, sir.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Gold, I did forget to say, now you guys have approved that, thank you so very much. The safety of our deputies, this will be paramount. There has been times where people have snuck drugs in, and it can have a really, really bad result, weapons. This is gonna be amazing. But on their website, on the Tech 84, with the information you have, go to the website. On the back end, they have testimonials from other counties that already have received a reimbursement for this item, but they're not in this state.
Well, just one more comment. If I had to go to prison and go through the body search and all of that, that is very demeaning, and at least they can stand there with their clothes on.
Yep, and that's, I've talked to a couple of other jail commanders, and they've just changed their policy to reflect it. There's certain times, given certain circumstances, that they can't use the scanner for whatever reason, so they still have to go to the old terms, but I'm excited about this.
Good job, sir.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, can I?
No? Okay. Do you need a break?
I thought we were getting pretty close. What do we?
We had a break at 10:00. We're gonna have our lunch break in 45 minutes.
Yeah.
Move on to I. And that's the RV. Mr. Commissioner Boyce?
Oh, thank you. Well, as I said, this has been, where's my Cypress information here? Council Huddle, we've had the paperwork. You said there's two different agreements, correct?
Thank you. Just for the record, we've talked about this. We had a presentation on it before. Then we had a workshop with the departments. The road department said they really didn't have the time or resources to do the work required, and so we have the sub-agreement with the park owner. You heard from him. I don't think the board needs any lengthy discussion. I feel like it was brought back for the board to make a decision. That's what we have before you. One is an intergovernmental agreement with the ODOT, and then the second is the sub-recipient agreement with the Cypress RV Park. So those are two items, it's two orders, two motions. I put them on Commissioner Boyce's place this morning when he asked to put this on the agenda today.
Thank you.
I had a question, because last week, I remember when we talked about this, the language from ODOT on our liability and those kind of things. I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear and the citizens are clear that we will have no liability on this.
We will, we are agreeing with ODOT that we will have, you know, and liability is a broad and encompassing word, but we have duties and responsibilities to ODOT, and what ODOT says is if we are going to subcontract those out, they want to look at the agreement first. So we subcontracted out and sent an agreement where we subcontracted out to the Cypress Hill, and then sent that to ODOT, and they said, that's okay, and then therefore, that's what we've submitted. So we are essentially getting an agreement from the RV ownership to cover our responsibilities to ODOT. And if that doesn't happen in any way, you know, we can terminate, do all other kind of things. But, yeah, that's what we're doing here.
Okay, so I'm clear. We have responsibilities through the contract with ODOT, and the RV park is going to assume those responsibilities with the contract with the county, and also have the proper insurance in place to cover that. I think I saw $2 million liability and another bump for something for, something catastrophic. I'm not sure on that, though, that's why I'm trying to make sure.
Sure, and then they would submit a certificate where we are an additional named insured on their liability policy.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may move for, which one, it doesn't matter which one first.
Probably the ODOT one first.
Yes, okay.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
Okay. In order, I make a motion, Mr. Chair, that the board approve order, the order authorizing the intergovernmental agreement with ODOT regarding installation and display in Rightaway, Langless RV Park, sometimes called Cypress Camp and RV Park.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Chair, you ready for another motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to, for the board to approve the order authorizing the subcontract agreement with Langless RV Park for installation and maintenance of the display, the artwork in the Rightaway.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, board. That is honestly our fifth try, and I'm gonna be so thrilled. One of the public testimony today was that they're my friends, and I go, these are citizens that have spent so much time, effort, love, and money into that project. You bet I helped them, that's my job. I'm gonna be ridiculed for trying to do just that and then accuse people staying there illegally.
Are we going to go into executive session? Is that next, or is there?
Well, I was going to do comments next and then go into executive session.
I'm gonna need to be excused.
Well, if we're going into exec session, I need to grab the disc, is all. I'm sorry to interrupt.
What time is it, 11:50? Why don't we do this? Why don't we take an early lunch? Can we take an early lunch? And we'll come back at 12:15. How's that? And then we can continue on with Commissioner comments and executive session.
I'm, it's not, okay, so that, good, we're in recess?
We'll be back at 12:15. All right, we are back in session. It is 12:16 on December 23rd, 2020. We're going to continue on with our agenda. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kinda did my, some of my commissioner comments with the biochar presentation. And Curry turned 165 years old last Friday, the 18th. Proud day for our history. Hang on one second. I think that. I'm looking here, I got a really good email just yesterday morning from Congressman DeFazio's office. I want to read just a couple of small paragraphs. Good news for Oregon ports and harbors. My friend Ed McGlon. In a major win for Oregon's coastal communities, Representative Peter DeFazio resolves decades-long fight and frees up billions of dollars for harbor maintenance. Good news for the Oregon coast, my gosh. Washington, Representative DeFazio, Chair of the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure Today, released the following statement after passage of its bipartisan Water Resources Development Act of 2020, which includes his provision to ensure that harbor maintenance funds are actually used for harbor maintenance. Say that again, to ensure that harbor maintenance funds are actually used for harbor maintenance. This measure now heads to the President's desk to be signed into law, and the President's gonna support it. This is a tremendous victory for Oregon's coastal communities. For decades, Congressman DeFazio has fought to unlock the Harbor Maintenance Trust Fund and ensure that funds already collected for harbor maintenance are fully utilized to keep our local ports dredged and jetties maintained. Finally, WRDA 2020 fulfills that goal. With this fix, our ports and harbors will have the resources they so desperately need, all without raising taxes or adding a penny to the deficit. There's more. I think you get the point. Been corresponding with our three unique ports that we're all proud of, and just very good news. So that's all I have for the rest of the day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold?
I would just like to, this will be my last meeting, thank those employees who I've worked with. A lot of them have been very hardworking and honest, and I really appreciate that, and I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I would like to make some comments about what Commissioner Boyce just commented on with the letter from DeFazio. I have some emails from Ray Blau, I believe his name is Ray Blauscher is his last name, how it's pronounced. He sent me an email yesterday with something very similar to this. I actually sent back a letter of disgust on how this letter was put out, asking us to get behind this measure, and the right Congressman DeFazio and Senator Merkley, and give them big pats on the back for what they've done. If you look at the actual disbursements, some of the language in this bill is good, in that they will force this money to be used in the actual ports. But if you look at the disbursements, and I can't find it right now to pull it up, millions and millions of dollars are given to counties like Coos Bay and Portland and all these counties. Coos Bay, I think, gets $7 million, if I remember, and I'm probably wrong. I know it's a minimum of $7 million. And we get a few shekels in the bottom of a bucket. I think we get $170,000. With the problems that we have just in the Rogue River, not to mention the problems in Brookings Harbor, I don't even know what the estimates will be to clean this river out, but for this officer, this congressman to send us a letter and ask us to pat them on the back and give us a draft letter of some language that we should be sending to their offices to commend them for the great job they've done to help our rivers and our ports, I say no. For the few pennies that we are going to get from this, I am actually appalled. For the work that's been put into this, the promises that have been made, not only from Washington but from state leaders, that this will be taken care of. We've got local businesses. This county's economy thrives on our rivers. Our tourism, our fishing, our rafting, everything. A lot of what happens in this county thrives on our rivers, and to see the few pennies that we get and then asking us to join them and patting Merkley and DeFazio on the back is disgusting. So that's my comment on that. As far as, I would like to thank Commissioner Gold for her service to the county.
You're welcome.
It's been well to work with you. It's been better than I thought it was when I came into office, how I thought it was gonna be. It's been better than I thought it was going to be. So I wish you well, I wish your family well, and I wish you a Merry Christmas, as I do all the commissioners and our staff. And let me see, what else I have on this? I think for public comments, that's all I'm going to have. I will have more, I'll have more to say on some other issues after executive session, but I think for public comments, that's all I'm going to say. So with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Earlier, we talked about the deeds. The deeds that you executed were with the property sales. We have the exchange on Floris Lake land with the state. Those still need to be executed. I've let Summer Madison know. She won't be here tomorrow. We're supposed to close on that by the end of the year. We're doing all the, so please, before you go, make sure we get those deeds with the state transacted. That's just what I want to say. Well, I have all three of you in the room, and I didn't want you to think you already did it and all that stuff, so.
Okay, but we still do have next week. I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Are they ready to sign?
If they're ready to sign, gladly, I'll sign them.
They are, JJ's got them, and Summer's aware, and she won't be here tomorrow, and I don't know what's gonna happen next.
I'm sure the people at Port Orford will be thrilled to get that over with.
I think, I think a lot of people will, yeah.
Commissioner?
Thank you. I just want to respond to your comments there. I think I understand a little bit of your frustration, although I would like to read just one quick paragraph, just for the Port of Gold Beach. This is an addition to the nearly $7 million that DeFazio worked with the Corps leadership to reprogram to address the upriver shelling issues at the Port of Gold Beach, the work for which should be done this coming summer. I think we'll be able to hold him to his word. You know, I have some issues with the congressman. I ran against him two years ago because of the fire issue, and he come through on that with the whole General Government Accounting Office and the response to that fire. And we've had a couple of good years, and I think, you know, you mentioned Merkley. The amount of work he's done on Sudden Oak Death has just been incredible. I don't agree with him on everything, but I have worked very hard to build those relationships. And if you went up to the Port of Port Orford in August and saw the dredge that was working on the southeast corner of their dock, and the amount of sediment that they were pulling out with that giant dredge, that's because of DeFazio. I gotta give him credit where credit is due. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, well, I'm not commenting on any other work that DeFazio or Merkley have done in the state. I'm just commenting on this particular letter, and I will say to you this. The reason that dredge was up in Port Orford during that time was because they couldn't get it into the Port of Gold Beach, because they have let it deteriorate so badly that they couldn't even get it into Gold Beach. So I was notified from Washington that they were going to have to defer any maintenance to this port at all this year, and they were gonna bring it up to Port Orford and use the extra time that they had up there. So it's because of past failures that this port is not clean, and it's because, directly because of DeFazio. As the head of the decision-making for the Army Corps of Engineers, it is his failures is the condition that our river is in. It's his failures that the old jet boats is gone. There's nothing left of that docking station over there. Lex's Landing is gone. So much, so many guides won't even book a fishing trip in this county anymore because they can't even get their boats up the river, much less the issues that we're having with spawning because of so much rock in the river and the raising of temperatures, and, you know, the predatory fish and birds that are in the air because the temperatures are warmer, and all the ancillary effects of his act, his failures to act in our river. Congressman DeFazio, I hope you're listening, and I hope next year I apologize or thank you for finally doing something in Curry County to protect our citizens here and not making sure everyone in Portland and Coos Bay and other rivers and ports in this northern state are happy. I hope you have as much care for this county as you do for them.
Well, there's $7 million, there's $7 million. Is that what this is gonna be from now on? There's $7 million sitting there. Let's see if he follows through. One thing we do agree on, how critically important our ports are to our economy, our employment, our commerce, our livelihood, our heritage. Thank you.
All right, so with that, at this time, we are going to enter into executive session per ORS 1926602A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. ORS 1926602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Upon leaving executive session, we will come back into our normal session. With that, we are in recess.
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon and for that matter, all western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire, actively managing our forests so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we as a board have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression. And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources. And as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Murph George Jr. and I'm the Forest Supervisor for the Rogue River Siski National Forest. The first things is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the Fire Chief of Jackson County Fire District III in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our, of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's, that's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand of all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water because I have told them that we're all born in water. We cannot live without it. It's our job to take care and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on that riverbank and blessed the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways. Keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Hi there, I'm Patrick Priest, Executive Director at CIS. And I really enjoy coming every year to this conference because CIS, we are all about counties. We are owned by counties. We were formed by the AOC. This is a great occasion for us to meet everybody in one place and learn what's important to the counties all across Oregon.
It's the networking. I mean, we learn a lot about the different issues that counties deal with, but it's networking with other commissioners, getting ideas on how they handle situations that is the most helpful for me.
I love my job. It actually matters to me on a daily basis. I used to do a lot of charity and, you know, in commissioning in Shute County, you can make a serious difference. Lots of things have happened since I've been in office and I feel like it's important to represent the people. I grew up in eastern Oregon and I love the residents of eastern Oregon. The architect of our first house actually had Doris Day as a dear friend and a client and he would bring Doris Day up the mountains in Malibu to our house as it was being built.
This is my fourth conference at AOC. My favorite part is the fellowship with other commissioners and coming up with solutions with common situations and with commissioners from around the state to best serve our people. My favorite part about being a commissioner in Josephine County is the people that we work with. We live in the most beautiful place, but we have the most beautiful people. They are talented, artistic, caring. We have such a high level of philanthropy and just caring for our fellow citizens and it's the best place in all of Oregon.
Hi, I'm Commissioner Martha Schrader from Clackamas County, Oregon. I'm the current President of the Association of Oregon Counties. Oh my goodness, I've been President for one year, but I've been a member of the Association of Oregon Counties since 2003. So one of the reasons I really wanted to be President and I've enjoyed it so much is because I get to know everybody across the state, all the commissioners. And I've been from one end of the state to the other, visiting with them, talking with them, and really getting an idea of how we differ, but more importantly, what our similarities are and what we can do with one another to move forward with good county government.
I've been coming to AOC now for four years. My favorite part of serving as Commissioner is trying to bring positive effects for our community and our county.
This is my second year at AOC and the camaraderie that I've found in my eastern Oregon partners and just the camaraderie of AOC has really blessed my life.
My name is Court Boyce, Curry County Commissioner. This is, this is a collection of people, county commissioners, public officials, well-attended from all over the state. You know, I have the privilege of working with a very diverse group of people, different ages, different backgrounds, different interests, but they're all teaming up to solve the problems of our county. And it's just, it's just really a pleasure to, to be able to be connected with and working with those, those people. And better days, good days ahead for our county and our citizens.
Hi, I'm Joe Tobolskus. This is my third AOC convention and my favorite part is the networking with the people. And the breakout sessions are kind of good because it gives me something to focus on, a goal where I want the county to be in five years when my term is up.
Hi, I'm Kilmack County Commissioner Dave Yamamoto. Our county college class was probably one of the, was the best county college class ever at AOC. It was the largest at over 33 members. When you look at the legislature and the power that the major metropolitan areas have, the rural counties are oftentimes left out of those conversations. AOC really does a terrific job of representing rural counties in rural interests and we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the impact that we do in Oregon without AOC.
My name is Joe Burney, Lane County Commissioner from Springfield. My favorite part is eating good food. My second favorite part is meeting with other commissioners, seeing what they're thinking, comparing solutions to problems, learning how nonpartisan solutions really are, and getting ideas.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Derek DeGroot, Klamath County Commissioner. So I'm running for Second Vice President of the Association of Oregon Counties. I believe that our association is perfectly poised to solve problems and bring solutions to Oregon politics and communicate with the legislature about the diversity of Oregon.
I'm Jay Bozovich and I'm a Lane County Commissioner. And so I've been a commissioner for about eight years and 11 months. And my favorite part about being a commissioner is this job is different every day.
Hi, my name is Alex Tardif and I'm a Commissioner for Columbia County and currently serving as AOC Treasurer in my second year. And the thing I enjoy most about AOC and being the Treasurer is the ability to bring 36 counties together to build a state vision, to move our state forward into the future while building a livable, workable community that we all want to enjoy.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the World Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could.
All right, so we're back in session. It is 12:47 on December 23rd, 2020. And we are coming out of that. And Commissioner Boyce, you had on the action items, 5D, a rehire of an employee, Ms. Crumley.
Yeah, do we need discussion on that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, we do.
Bringing up my agenda here. Where was it originally? What's the number?
5D.
Oh. No, it should be a six number. Thank you. Good job.
I'm talking about agenda, not ARS's. 5D.
Yeah, we moved it, if you recall.
To other.
Yeah. So yes, we've watched- So yes, we've watched Treasurer Crumley grow in this job over many years, and she's very popular with the public, and her work has been tremendous. She has agreed to work, forgive me here, has agreed to work for a month, minimum, or excuse me, maximum of 80 hours at $75 per hour, which I think, no benefits, which I think is a very good deal for this county because I know she cares very much, comes highly qualified. So, this covers our bases, Mr. Chair, at least through the end of January, perhaps the 1st of February. So, let me know when you're ready for a motion.
Well, I think the problem is, though, we still don't have a Treasurer. We have a Treasurer-elect who has said that he is probably not going to take the job. He's made it very public that he's probably not going to take the job. So, as we know, our Treasurer has told us many times, it's going to take several weeks to get someone up to speed, of which she's giving a maximum of the end of January to have whoever completely up to speed and ready to operate, and she's done. And I thought that was actually pretty gracious, because last week it was a week and a half or two weeks, period. So for me, I have grave concerns that we will not have a Treasurer up to speed and ready to operate the Treasurer's office if we don't act immediately to do something. I will say that after last week's meeting, we invited Mr. Hanscom to come to this meeting, and he declined to come. There's been some further talk about his intended actions, and I have something here on my phone. I would like to enter the recording into this meeting. This was put up on the local radio station. Could you identify what it is, please, for?
You're listening to KCIW 100.7 FM broadcasting from Brookings, Oregon. News break. Curry County's newly-elected Treasurer says he's not sure if he's gonna take the job. Terry Hanscom says he has a philosophical disagreement with Curry County Commissioners, and that he was under a misunderstanding about how the Treasurer's Office is run when he ran for and was elected to the office. Hanscom says he's also factoring in personal issues, and says that he'll announce whether or not he'll take the job on January 4th. That's the day Terry Hanscom is scheduled to be sworn in as Curry County Treasurer. If he decides not to take office, KCIW has told, there won't be another election. The Board of Commissioners will instead appoint a Treasurer for the county. For KCIW News, I'm Lori Gallo's daughter.
So, with that information, it gives me even more concern, as you know, it's been said that the reasons he's, you know, up in the air about this, it seems like it's more of a philosophical reason and not a health issue. It was a byline that it was a health issue on the end of that. I'm not going to debate that. That is Mr. Hanscom's personal issue that he has to deal with. What I will say is, I had a conversation with Mr. Hanscom last evening. After last week's meeting, I immediately called David Brock Smith, and we had a lengthy talk on the phone about his comments, the, what seemed to be a very... I'll be careful with my words. It just seemed to be a very coincidental that he called in a minute or two before the board was to decide on something and interject his comments. So it seemed to me that it was coordinated between Commissioner Boyce and Commissioner, or I mean with Representative Brock Smith sometime earlier that morning, that he call in because of the emergency meeting. In our conversations, he agreed with me on some things and disagreed with me on others. He gave his opinion, and he said, "You know, the best thing I could tell you to do, Commissioner, is call him and see if he'll talk to you." So, after waiting for the last several days for him to talk to me, or to get ahold of the board and let us know what his decision was gonna be, I decided last night to call him. And his words to me were a little startling. I asked him if he, as a Commissioner, ever had to hire people, and it was an important position that needed to be filled, and did he feel as though he should get an answer? He deserved an answer, and he answered in the affirmative on that. And we had some other talk. He was very disappointed in the order that was sent to him. He said he would not be here today because the order wasn't actually an order. It was only signed in an affirmative by one Commissioner. A second Commissioner opposed it, and for some reason, my name wasn't on it. I remember signing the order, but for some reason, my name was not on that order as a signature, so he found it as an invalid order, and that's why he said he is not here today. He did relay to me that he spoke with his county, with his council in Portland while his family was up there visiting, and he got advice from his council up there. And then he made some very disturbing comments to me, and most disturbing was, he said, "I'm being pulled in a lot of different directions, and a lot of people are trying to get me to do something." And I made a comment to him, I said, "Would that be, like, I would imagine Jim's putting a lot of pressure on you, right?" And he said, "Yes, he is, along with others." And the pressure that I believe he, and this is my own call, is, the pressure is, is that he was asked to be a, file for a Treasurer, to run for Treasurer, and I think the facts over time will bear out, that he was asked to be a Treasurer and would be told, was told that it would be a part-time appointed, or a part-time elected position, and a Deputy Treasurer would be appointed, and they would do most of the work, but they needed him as the Treasurer here. And I believe those people are, in my opinion, Commissioner Boyce, Assessor Jim Colan, Clerk Renee Colan, and some others in the county. I don't know why this would be, that these people would want to get involved in a public election to the extent that they are now, he has said, pressuring him to make, to do different things. I believe he wants to resign. I believe that he'd never wanted to be Treasurer. If you watch the League of Women Voters meeting that was held this fall, he even says, "If you want somebody that's better qualified than me, vote for her," and he pointed to the other candidate. When someone that's running for an elected office says something like that, that says a lot about it to me. So, I'm just saying this to the public here in Curry County, so that hopefully they can get all the facts. I don't know the reasoning, the whole reasoning behind having Mr. Hanscom in as Treasurer, but I do believe that there has been a concerted effort to do this and to block anyone else from being put into that seat by asking him to put this off until after January 4th, at which point he has made public that he will swear in and then resign. I mentioned some ORSs last week that were quite clear, and there is some disputed facts, or dispute, disputed comments that those ORSs are worded in such a way that they could be construed in other ways. There is also the oath of office and bearing a false swearing, which is ORS 162-075, which means if you take an oath to do something... And I want to start this with, the reason that this is so important to me is because I believe oaths are very important. I grew up in a family with, that said the words honor, oath, commitment, love of country. When there was a football game on a Sunday afternoon, we stood up when the girl came out and sang the anthem, when they played the anthem. Oaths to me are important. My entire family was in the military and took that oath. If you're gonna take an oath of office to do something with the intent to resign after, in my opinion, that is a violation of ORS 162-075. Because you're swearing to do an oath, you're swearing by the oath to do a job, and then you immediately resign thereafter, you never intended to follow through with your oath, and therefore it becomes a violation and a false swearing. I will also say that I am deeply concerned, and I want the citizens of this county to know, if you're unhappy with my job, recall me. But I'm gonna fight for what's right in this county until my election term is up. I believe what's happening in this county is wrong. I believe there is a group of people in this county that are trying to control it, and they are doing everything that they can to do that. I have, for many months, watched different people in this county be pressured, and in my opinion, threatened in their jobs, in the press, and in statements around this building. Commissioners having notes hung on their doors of how horrible job they did. Ex-administrators who were told, were under order of the court not to speak of that again and continually put this county at risk. Different employees in this county threatened, told they don't know what they're doing with their jobs, asked to apologize in public. People moving out of the BOC offices because they're uncomfortable working there and the pressure that they're under. Some of the things said to other public officials, like Ms. Ward telling her they're gonna give her the benefit of the doubt. And now we finally got, everyone said, five, five finance guys in the last five years. We finally got a guy that I think is the A-plus for this county, to do the finance work in this county and help our finance department to get out of this, and he's being told, "Don't move into his office." He's being told, "Be careful what you do and say because I'd like to have a great relationship with you." And now we've got a Treasurer's issue that is gonna put this county at risk. We've got a finance department that has kicked their butts to get some stuff done, to get out of the mess that we were in. They worked unbelievable hours with sacrifice to get audits done, get this county back in line, and now you're gonna put the burden of some of the Treasurer's duties, if we don't have a Treasurer, on the finance department to do their job too, when you have other ways to do that. I think we need to decide what to do with this Treasurer situation immediately, and it is imperative for this county and the safety of this county. And I said last week, "I'll train to be Treasurer if that's what I'm supposed to do." I don't want to be Treasurer, but I'll sit in the Treasurer's office and try and learn all I can, because I have a lot of background in finance, to help expedite that. I don't want to be Treasurer. I want to appoint somebody that is qualified to be Treasurer. We had a woman that ran against Mr. Hanscom. Now, if you want to look at it that way, had Mr. Hanscom known, I believe, what he was, the duties of the Treasurer, that it was gonna be full-time, that it was gonna be harder than he thought, there was a lot of things that he wasn't familiar with, that he was gonna have to learn and do, I don't believe he would've run. So if he didn't run, the other candidate that ran would've run unimposed and would've been elected. So Mr. Hanscom won the election, but if he doesn't wish to be Treasurer, should it be that the candidate, the only other person that came forward and ran against him, should be put in that position? That's something for this board to consider. We've heard from our Treasurer, there's someone else that she feels is qualified to be Treasurer. If that person has the qualifications and can expedite the process to get us covered, where when she fulfills her term, that our Treasurer's Office is covered, perhaps that's what this board needs to do. If we don't feel either one of those two people are qualified, we need to find a way to keep the Treasurer's Office up and running, to make sure that the bills of this county are paid, that the districts of this county are paid, and all the grants and everything that we've applied for are applied for properly, and their reporting are up to date. To say that I'm picking on Mr. Hanscom, I will also tell you that Mr. Hanscom, in my conversation with him last night, I apologized to him if he took any offense from the order that was written, and I said, "I didn't mean it that way," if that's the way you took it. But as a county Commissioner with a job to do, what I said to him was, "The county needs to know if it's a yes, no, or maybe, and that's all we were asking from you last week, is it a yes, no, or maybe?" And by taking the time to write Commissioner Gold and to call the current Treasurer and not give that answer, when all that time you expended could've been much more quickly defined by a yes, no, or maybe answer?
Wait, you just, may I interrupt for a second? You lost me. Were you still in your conversation with Mr. Hanscom last evening?
Yes.
So yes, maybe, or no?
What I said to him was, "If I took offense to the order that we asked him to appear here, I apologize if he took offense to that, because there was no offense intended. All I wanted from him, this board had asked for, an answer, are you gonna be the Treasurer or not? Or give me a couple more days to think about it. If there is a health situation, I'll know more in a few days and I'll let you know." Instead, he did none of that. That's the reason for the order, and if he took offense to that, all I'm saying is I apologize to him for the order, if he took offense. It is imperative that this county knows if we're gonna have a Treasurer in place, and if not, to appoint a Treasurer that can do the job, and that's really all I have.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Would you have taken offense if somebody ordered you, as an elected public official, to appear before a board when there's tremendous controversy on their authority or not? Would you be offended?
Can I answer?
Of course.
Okay, let me answer. I would absolutely not have been offended, because being a past Commissioner and understanding the job of a Commissioner and the decisions that you have to make sometimes spur the moment, and working hand-in-hand as a past Commissioner with the Treasurer's Office and understanding the Treasurer's duties, I would not have taken offense at all, knowing that that's how important it is, because he has to know how important it is that he give us an answer, because he's been a Commissioner and he understands it's imperative that we have a Treasurer.
So yes, maybe, or no? Did he answer you that, or did he ask for more time?
He said at this, I want to be clear on this, because somehow I'm going to be charged on it.
Why would think?
He said, I believe.
Did he know the conversation was gonna be public today?
His answer to me was, "At this point, he's not going to give me an answer. He will give me his answer on January 4th and no sooner."
And that's what we've been saying, Mr. Chair, for how long? Ten days since we learned we had a potentially difficult issue, when he found out he had a family medical issue that's really weighing on him. So what has changed?
What has changed is what I just said. He's been a past Commissioner here. He's worked in county government for several years. He understands the, how imperative it is we have a Treasurer, and he understands how imperative it is that the finances, the bills of this county are paid, the employees of this county are paid, the insurance is taken care of, the reportings are done, and the districts are paid, as this is a crucial time of year.
And I will, and I will submit that in his conversation with you, and as long as I've known him, he has no issues understanding what his responsibility is. That's why he, the pressure he's getting, Mr. Chair, is from the order to come here and appear before this board. The pressure he's getting was from your phone call last night. The pressure he's getting is from this being poorly handled by this board, creating an emergency.
Did he tell you that?
No. Common sense would tell you that, sir.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what he told me.
He's under tremendous pressure.
No, you're wrong. You just said this is why he's under this pressure.
You also said.
What he told me was, let me answer you now, sir. What he told me in his conversation, because I said, "Is Jim pressuring you? Do you feel pressure from Jim?" And he said, "Yes, I do, and several others." That's who he's feeling the pressure from, because I believe he wants to resign right now, and he can legally resign right now just by handing this board a piece of paper.
Commissioner Pash, that is so subjective. You don't know that.
Can I say? Please don't interrupt me.
You don't.
Please don't interrupt me.
You're selling. You're selling him so short, and it's offensive.
And I talk. What I said was, I believe, and I'm entitled to my beliefs, I believe he would love to resign right now and just hand us a letter saying, I resign, because I believe now he knows if he takes the oath of office and then resigns, he's got a problem. Okay? I believe if he could, he would resign right now, but he's feeling pressure from his friends to please hold this out until January 4th. When we, let's get to the bones of it, when we have a new board to make that decision.
You know what? I doubt, Mr. Chair, that he's feeling pressure from his friends, and I doubt that he told you that. I haven't talked to him for a week at least.
So you're just calling me a liar?
I've not talked to him for at least a week, and that's because I don't want any pressure on him. And I doubt if Assessor Cullen has either. I will put the integrity of Assessor Cullen up before this county and his, and Clerk Cullen, with the depth of the care they have for this county and the commitment they have to this county. And what I heard earlier today is so appalling and so slanderous and so unfortunate. I don't believe for a second that Assessor Cullen is pressuring Mr. Hanscom.
I will say this.
No, I'm not done. I listened for about seven or eight minutes, okay? So just forgive me here. I wanna clear up some thing, clarify some things.
Well, but while you're on this, I wanna just clarify something for you, sir.
Here we go. Thank you.
I raise my hand to God that I have not exaggerated one word that he has told me. He is the one, when I said, is Jim pressuring you, he said, yes, and several others. You can believe me or not, but what I say to that man above, I don't deviate one moment of the truth, sir. That's exactly what he told me.
Well, that's quite noble, and I hope that that is accurate. But meanwhile, his personal life is being absolutely uncovered here. And I, I am just, I'm sorry, incredibly appalled. So I wanna revert back to a couple other things you said for clarification. I announced to the board on the meeting of the 17th, because I had an hour and 17 minutes to prepare for an emergency meeting, I announced to the board that I had asked Brock Smith to call in. So you just made that sound like I was conspiring with him. You may recall, Mr. Chair, he went straight to the treasurer to understand where the county might be in the authority question. And I thought he'd give an excellent presentation.
I don't recall you announcing to the board that.
Well, you can probably go back and read it, and it doesn't matter. I said, I pointed to the phone, that's David Brock Smith calling.
Well, that's when he was dial, when he was calling in. Yes, you announced that. I'm talking about prior to that.
Okay, so what is your point? That I did something nefarious?
No, my point is that you planned with David Brock Smith to call in and try and stop us from doing what we were doing.
And thank goodness, Mr. Chair.
And he has no duty to do that in Curry County.
Okay, that's your opinion.
That's my opinion, and I like it.
This is a small county, this is a team, and you, thank goodness, you did let him speak, and you did ask him some questions, but you didn't let Clerk Cullen stay here. You escorted her from the meeting, and I thought, I can't believe what I'm seeing here. A 30-year public servant who is incredibly popular is, I'll tell you, when you get outside of Curry County, you understand how lucky we are to have her as a treasurer, and I saw her character. Tim's assassinating her character today, and I resent that.
I'm not assassinating her character. I did not, let me finish with your making statements. I wanna, I wanna answer them. I asked Assessor, or Clerk Cullen to leave the executive session meeting. There was nothing in there, as she even said, I'm here for election law. If you need me for that, if not, I'll leave. There was nothing in the meeting going to be talked about, about election law or anything like that. So with that, I asked her to leave the meeting, and she volunteered to leave. I don't know why you're so offended by that.
Because you just, because I think she was treated rudely, and I think we did not. You failed, Mr. Chair, to take advantage of her expertise in the law. So if I may, I've got one more thing when it comes to K C I W radio. I was on the, the short end of the news article that they sent out. It was Miss Doddard, and it was terribly inaccurate. There were so many things earlier today that were horribly inaccurate. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I've got a statement for you here. You say you're willing to step in as chair. I will, I understand that that's, that may be your, your direction, that you prefer to take this county. And I'm going to, I'm going to stand strongly against that. And here's what I wanna offer to, to this board and to the citizens. And I hope it, I hope it has a positive impact, especially after the day we've had. The day's date, December 23rd, and this is gonna take a few minutes, but it won't end up, no offense intended, I won't end up taking as much time as you did. But this is a good discussion, no complaining. This is critically important to this county, the direction we go. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Twenty-one has always been my number. High school, boat racing, all the rest of it is gonna be a great year. So I'm truly looking forward to that. And it has been quite a year. We've had to deal with COVID and what turned out to be a very contentious presidential, amongst other elections, and it's still not done.
I wonder what this has to do with what we're talking about?
Don't interrupt me again, please, sir. I didn't interrupt you.
Talk about the president right now and your basketball letter. What does this have to do with the treasurer's office and emergency?
Just bear with me, and I didn't interrupt you, and you've interrupted me about five times, so please control.
Because I'd like to keep the meeting on target.
Here in Curry County, our citizens very wisely made the decision to rehire our county's chief election authority and county clerk Renee Cullen by an overwhelming majority. I don't think there's any clear indication of whom our citizens trust. In all matters, elections and the public record, our citizens also place their trust in Terry Hanscom as treasurer and myself as commissioner. Significantly, our citizens chose not to rehire Sue Gold. And now I'm wondering if that isn't really the reason why we're here today. This lengthy, somewhat heated discussion, not to mention the 17th and the 16th. You didn't win at the ballot box, so your plan is to fabricate an emergency so you can attempt to bully the people's choice, treasurer-elect Hanscom, to resign now in order for the two of you to appoint you as county treasurer? What's next after that? You gonna appoint Sue Gold as commissioner? This scheme is exactly why Curry's citizens have twice overwhelmingly voted down a home rule county government to prevent overreaching commissioners, like the two of you, from subverting the will of the people. If there is to be a vacancy in this office in Curry County, the treasurer, there is a well-established, well-established process to quickly and legally fill that vacancy. Curry County has followed that path.
Are you done, or is there more?
No, I'm not done, thank you. Just give me a, give me a moment here. People, the point is, there is no emergency. Many times over the last 30 years, the Curry County Board of Commissioners has filled vacant elected official positions. It's not a complicated process. For example, Curry has appointed three treasurers in less than 25 years after vacancies occurred. Patty Ingersoll, Izzy Brock, and Debbie Crumley, all friends of mine over the years. By the way, we've also appointed, after vacancies occurred, four sheriffs. Alan Boyce, not my father, but my first cousin, tremendous man. Son of Jerry Boyce Malk, who founded Jerry's Jet Boats. Also, my good friends Ken Owens and John Bishop. I just had the chance of it with John Bishop at the veterans' ceremony Saturday. He was a good sheriff. And finally, a fellow we all know well by the name of John Ward. All four of those were appointed. Likewise properly appointed. One more for you, a gentleman by the name of Terry Hanscom was appointed to replace Dave Worshol after the vacancy occurred back in the early 80s. Mr. Hanscom went on to serve as commissioner of Curry County for 10 years. He is obviously well-respecting Curry County, and in my view, was defamed by you on the 17th during the so-called emergency meeting. So, and again, if, if Mr. Hanscom decides to resign, the board should, and I certainly will insist, on full and open public transparency, and in the interest of finding the best possible candidates. And thank goodness, yes, I'd not heard Treasurer Crumley's recommendation that she gave earlier today. Should request, if I have my way, shall request and set out for a 10-day period, asking, seeking for Curry County citizen applications for a treasurer, for the board to appoint. In view of perhaps this most important Curry elected position, and I really believe that, thank you, I will advise, request, of course, that those, any applicants include, undergo intense background checks. We'd be very wise to seek counsel of Clerk Cullen and County Council Huddle. Can't read my own. If we're faced with that situation, and certainly we will. Just the other day, our county's chief elections expert, Renee Cullen, informed you that this board has no legal authority to even start the appointment process. Our own county council, John Huddle, confirmed that this was true. It turns out you just didn't like the answer, and so despite my protest, you asked Clerk Cullen to leave the room and not be involved.
You're wrong there, but go ahead.
Yeah, well, she couldn't stay. She wasn't allowed to, oh, come on, my goodness. Now you're flying by the seat of your pants and making the rules as you go, even going so far as to proclaim that treasurer-elect Hanscom will be breaking the law if he takes the oath of office, when he needs this time, just a few days for his family.
Let me say, for the public, please read O R S one six two zero seven five. O R S one six two point zero seven five, for the public to read what a false swearing is. Go ahead, sir.
And now the two of you have the audacity to attempt to command treasurer-elect Hanscom to come kneel before you and provide you with a statement he is not yet prepared to make or may not make at all? You are, two are forgetting that treasurer-elect Hanscom was elected and has served honorably as Curry County Commissioner. Terry likely knows more about the authority and responsibility of a county commissioner, the three of us put together. I know you don't like hearing it, we're going to learn that we have the exact authority Clerk Cullen and Council Huddle said we have, and none. That's all I have, thank you.
Counsel?
I actually don't remember making that much of a statement. I thought the question is, what is the impact of our order for him to appear? And I said that was uncertain to me, but I don't remember really weighing in on any of the other appointment powers. I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyce, I don't recall that. So if anyone recalls differently, but I just, I'm just going off memory and I wasn't prepared for it, but I, that's the only comment I have on what Commissioner Boyce just said.
So do you think the other eight or nine appointments, however, though, has a, has a legal precedence?
I, I couldn't even talk to that without looking at all the stuff, so I just.
You just give me the, the general thoughts there on what that would mean and why we would deviate from that? Because we don't have a vacancy yet.
There, I, I would have to look, again, I would just have to look. But, but I just wanted to, for the record, I, I remember saying I wasn't sure what, if he didn't appear based on our order, but I just don't remember weighing in on whether this board had the ability to even consider appointments. So I just, and I still don't think I have, so.
Citizens, I will, I will retract that then, and, because I do respect you and I do, I do wanna offer that. Thank you.
So I'd like to say this, we have, we have some decisions to make in the next coming days. On who's gonna be the treasurer if Mr. Hanscom does not take the oath and become treasurer? Or if he does take the oath and resign? I don't know if we should maybe, you know, we've got, we've got someone that was running for office, that had Mr. Hanscom not been there, that person would've been elected as treasurer with, with no one running against her. And as our treasurer has told us in an earlier meeting, we also have someone else that she feels could be qualified in a matter of weeks to become our treasurer. Do we pu? Sure.
So just to make a clarification, I will be here the month of January to take care of payroll and A P. We know that much, right? I'm not gonna let this people down, our county down.
Right. No, I understand that. I understand that. But February 1st, February 1st.
Well, that gives us just a little window, but I, I just hope and pray Terry will make a wise decision here.
And if, and if, and if we wait until the 4th, 5th of January to find that out, and, and then he says, no, I'm not gonna be, and we have to put out a, a thing for a new treasurer, and that may take two or three weeks to get answers to who the board should look at as a treasurer, we may be into March or April before we have a seated treasurer that can do the job, that's trained to do the job.
Thank you, Treasurer Crumley. I'm not surprised you come up to the podium today, because I don't think you see that we have an emergency. I don't wanna speak for you, I'm sorry. Okay, does it, if I offer this again for full public transparency in the interest of finding the best possible candidates? 10-day period, you wanna do it shorter, you wanna do a six-day period? The person has to be a citizen of Curry, citizen of Curry County.
We have one, we have one already.
Who?
The one that finished second in the election.
Okay, that, that's irrelevant. She certainly should be encouraged to apply, but we hope, you know, I would think you'd wanna get half a dozen applicants here.
Wouldn't, let me ask you this, if you're the governor of a state and you have a commissioner step down, what is, what is the governor's duty to do? To ask the people, the other, let's say as a commissioner, to ask the other commissioners their recommendation on who she should appoint? That's usually how Oregon law works, to my, to my understanding. Am I correct, counsel?
I don't know what the governor's jobs are on appointed. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Gold?
Uh, let me just say there was a precedent of sorts when all of the, or a lot, four of the Port of Brookings Harbor commissioners were recalled. This board ended up choosing two new port commissioners so that they could have a quorum and be able to choose the others. So I would say that's a precedent. And we were asked as commissioners to make that recommendation to the governor.
I mean, this is what I'm struggling with right now. Should this board say that the, the person that finished second in the election be appointed as treasurer if Mr. Hanscom does not fill his position or resigns?
That, that is totally irrelevant. We have to see who the potential applicants are out there in a full, public, transparent process. And it doesn't matter if there's one or 10 that apply. We have the responsibility to go through those citizens and determine, as this board is authorized, we do have that authority to find the best one. That's a full public thing. There can be no good old boy things like we had here this morning, and you two are trying to, it looks like you're trying to appoint either you or her to the position. We don't know if she's the most qualified available.
I've already told you, I don't wanna be treasurer. I said I would sit in at the seat to help until, and if no one found a treasurer after months of that, and I needed to be there, I would do that.
So when I was appointed, the Board of Commissioners, they had, they had me fill out an application. I was, I just came back to fill in for a time to catch, to catch the county up, because you have to have someone there. And since I was a deputy, I could do that, but I still had to apply for the treasurer's position along, and there were like three applications. It was over a.
There's precedents, thank you. That's the right way to do it for the public.
But Elizabeth, I would think if she really is passionate, she could apply, and if someone else is interested, and then you could talk to them. That's my, that's just how it was when I was appointed. I didn't know if that was the order or if the commissioners just picked that.
Okay, thanks. Did you have something, Mr. Barnes? You raised your hand.
Yes, I did. This is all, I don't know what the law is, but this is all happening before this person is even seated. So what we're talking about here is giving it to the rightful person who would've won the election had things been the way they were supposed to and this gentleman not run if he didn't intend to serve. That's part of what you sign on for when you sign your candidate form, is that you pledge, you pledge to take the nomination and that you qualify for the office. If he didn't do that and he's not qualified, then it should be to, I would think would be to the next, to the runner-up in the election anyway, you know? And I don't know where all this talk of applicants is coming from. This is a public official who you are appointing. People don't apply for that, people run for that, and we've already had an election.
Okay, so.
And when she ran, or excuse me, when she was appointed, she just said there's a total of four applicants? Three counting you. Thank you. That's the way it's done everywhere. You know, especially outside Curry.